Welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, July 7th. We'll call to at 6:36 PM. Do you guys want to leave reorg to the end or do it first?
Sure.
The end?
Leave it to the end.
Okay. Why don't we jump down to the meeting with Ursaco regarding the upgrades to Irving Center wastewater treatment plant, POTW number two. Welcome. I don't know who's speaking to it, Morris, if you want to start or whoever.
Is it sort of one at a time?
Um, we can handle more than one, so if you want to bring a couple more chairs. Do we need to make adjustments? We will. Thank you.
Who are we beaming out to?
Everyone.
Tens of thousands of.
Of viewer. Uh, it's, it's live streamed and it's on the community television.
So, good evening, Town of Irving. Thank you, Select Board, for taking the time out to, to hear from us. Uh, we represent, we're Irving Industries, comma, Inc. We've got Zach Rannie here, who represents our environmental, um, aspect. Tuwanda is our plant engineer. He's going to walk you through the project in a moment. Ethan Cavelli runs the treatment plant at Irving. And Eric is our production manager, so.
Welcome.
Thank you. And I'm Morris Howson, President of Irving Industries. The, the project that we'd like to talk about, that we'd like the town support on, is based on the sledge product that we've been generating for decades. Uh, we finally found an opportunity to dry it and reduce the volume of it. As Tuwanda's going to explain to you, uh, we're going to make the, uh, we're going to reduce the volume significantly. We're going to make a better product by drying it out, and we've got a sample to show you. Um, essentially about half as much product, um, is going to be, um, hauled, uh, which means we'll be reducing our hauling impact. So, half as many, essentially, half as many truckloads, um, I think is kind of exciting. We'll be traveling through the town of Irving. And, um, we're looking at, we're currently a type one sludge, and we always have been. Uh, with the dryness levels that we're, uh, looking forward to, we could likely get to a type one sludge. If I say that right, we're currently a type two, and we're headed to be, uh, there's an opportunity to be a type one if we dry it properly, uh, which is our expectation, which opens up alternatives. We don't have anything in mind right now, but, uh, it seems better to have less material type one instead of a type two, um, and a drier, better product. So with that, um, unless you have questions for me, Tuwanda's got the juicy details.
Would it be good?
No questions at this time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Packets, section nine is the presentation that was sent over.
Yep.
All right, so I don't know if the presentation is going to be shown somewhere or.
They have it all in front of you.
We all have it in front of us, but we don't have anywhere to put it up right now. We weren't planning to project it. Does that work?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
I'll just grab the computer.
Okay, yeah, sure, sure.
It's smart to get it ahead of time, Brian.
They're fully digital now, they're, nothing printed.
We try to pre-read as much as we can too.
Uh, I have a question, Ms. Howson.
Sure.
Could you just briefly explain the, the difference between, um, the type two and the slight, uh, the type one sludge? And, and how it, the, the difference relates to each other?
It's a regulatory, um, question, um, Ethan or Zach?
Yeah, it's, uh, comes down to like fecal coliform. Um, when, when you have fecal in your material, you can't, uh, land apply it, um, anywhere. So you have to eliminate that bacteria. By drying it, you can eliminate it if your temperatures are long enough or you dry enough of it. It should eliminate that factor of the, of the sludge, which then, uh, opens up avenues of where you can dispose of it or who can take it and do what with it, so.
I think type two needs heavier permitting and more scrutiny, uh, which we've always had.
Right.
With type one, I think, don't, sort of DEP gives you an annual thumbs up and then.
Yeah, I mean, Massachusetts is still different, but, um, other states might, um, look at it differently. There might be alternative uses industrial-wise, um, that, that might open up. We haven't really looked into it so much as, um, we were looking at the, the savings in the moisture content and stuff. So, that was, it was like a caveat on top or a bonus on top is that we could get it to a type one instead of a type two. And the potential is there.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so I'll just run through the presentation. Um, so we currently do about thirty-five thousand tons of, of sludge on an annual basis, um, at forty-five percent dry solids by weight. Um, and as discussed, our sludge is currently a type two, and we'd benefit from, uh, bringing it to a type one, um, as we, uh, will probably have more alternatives. And so fifty-five percent of our sludge, um, in weight is currently water. So, of what we currently send, um, or dispose of, fifty-five percent of, of, of the hauling costs go, goes to, uh, to water. So you can imagine it'd be, uh, beneficial if we could get rid of as much moisture as possible. Uh, so in the past, several dryers have been considered. But, you know, they, they weren't as feasible as we'd have liked them to be. We do have a dryer that we stumbled upon that, uh, that will be, that is feasible. Um, just going to run through the objectives of, of the project. Um, so first off is to reduce the water content from the, the current fifty-five percent to, um, under ten percent by weight, um, to reduce our, uh, annual sludge tonnage by up to fifty percent, um, to convert our sludge to a type one, so that we've got more alternatives.
Let me just say, listen, we pay about a hundred ninety-eight dollars a ton for hauling. So, that's.
A hundred ninety-eight or ninety-eight?
No, what, ninety-eight, not a hundred. Ninety-eight dollars per ton, um, for those thirty-five thousand tons today.
How much per, how much goes in a truckload? Because now you get me curious, roughly.
Thirty-two tons.
Thirty-two tons, yeah.
Thirty-two per?
Well, we do about five a day.
Yeah, okay. So I'm saying about a thousand a year, a little north of a thousand. Got it?
Yeah, but yeah, about a thousand trucks a year.
Yeah.
That adds up fast.
Okay, so thus far, what we've done is with the, uh, it's called an IEC. IEC is the company name. Um, the dryer itself is called an attrition flash dryer. Um, and that speaks to the process, the drying process that it employs. Um, and we've identified this, uh, this dryer as a cost-effective solution. We visited two plants that have this dryer installed and currently running, and we've got nothing but positive feedback from the, um, operators of those plants. Um, one was a wood pellet mill in Connecticut. Um, the other is, um, Turkey Manure Farm, uh, processing plant. They process turkey manure. It's in, uh, Indiana. We've also sent eighteen tons of our sludge down to Indiana to be run in the, uh, in the dryer that they have installed there. Uh, we were present. We witnessed the, the test, the test. Um, and our sludge was successfully dried from forty-two percent, thereabouts, to about eighty-eight to ninety-two percent, uh, in, in dry solids by weight. And also present were, um, scientists who did the, uh, the emissions testing whilst we were doing the, um, the drying trials. And what they got from the, uh, from the testing that they did was that our emissions are well within, um, uh, the environmental regulations. So that, that was really good news for us.
If I could, just to make a point there, right? DEP wants to see us use, dry the material in the equipment that we're actually going to be using, not just theoretical. So we actually took a truckload out to Indiana and ran it as if it would be run when it's here in Irving.
Um, so, in the presentation, I've got, I've got a few drawings, um, isometric views of the, of a similar dryer, similar to what we're going to be installing, what we would be installing.
Y'all see the layout?
Yeah.
Gives you an idea of the, of the footprint. Uh, there's pictures of, 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 of dryers installed in, in other, in other plants. Um, there's a, there's a video in there as well of, uh, of the, uh, of the dryer running uh, when we, when we did the test in, uh, in Indiana.
So those photos are from the Indiana drying system?
Yeah, with the blue, um, pieces of equipment, yeah, yeah. And that, that shows you the, the sludge being, being fed into the, into the dryer, um, and, and it's got the, it's got the burner there and all the piping that comes with it. It's not too much, it's not too much, um, equipment. Um, there won't be, uh, much infrastructure changes or implementations that'll be required, which is, which is great.
It's basically a, it's a furnace burning some natural gas, and it's blown through a ductwork, and then we sprinkle the sludge in, and the, you know, it's like a hair dryer. And it just, as you drop in the sludge, uh, it passes along through the, the hair dryer, um, air and dries.
Doesn't take long, very fast.
Simple.
Very simple.
So much simpler than the dozens of other dryers that we looked at.
Yeah, um, the next, the next slide has another video, uh, which shows the dried material coming out of the dryer. In, in our scenario though, we wouldn't have it, uh, coming out like that. It'd be going into an enclosed hopper that feeds into a briquetter, uh, which, um, which will basically compact it, um, so that it's easier to handle, and also so that, uh, we can actually max out on our, uh, tonnage on a truck, on a trailer. Because, um, the dry material coming out of that, on that video is pretty, it's pretty light and fluffy, so. Um, the next slide has a briquetter. It's got a hopper where the, uh, the dried sludge will be fed into. Um, it's taken up by a screw conveyor, uh, or an auger, uh, into the actual briquetter where it gets compacted. And you can see at the end of the video, um, you've got like salamis of, uh, of sludge coming out. Uh, those will be fed into, uh, a grinder that will, uh, grind the material to this texture.
Let the record show. So after the briquetting, we'll chop it up into gravel, I guess, you could call it. That's going to be the, the end product.
Yeah, currently it comes out, uh, when it comes out of the dryer, it's almost like blown insulation. It's really fluffy.
Right, fluffy powder.
You would fill a truck with half the tonnage, so you double your trucks, even though you're, you're, so we have to recompact it so that we can put it on a truck and still meet the weight without, um, you know, running extra trucks.
Basically densifying it?
Yeah.
And then shipping it back up?
That's right, yeah.
Rather than leaving it in that form, yeah.
It, obviously it's drier, it's, it's easier to handle, it's a gravel rather than a wet sludge. God forbid something's happening, you know, there's a, a truck, uh, has an accident on the road. Instead of having a sludge bomb, you got some gravel. So, uh, we think there's a lot of good reasons to, to go this way.
The dryers that operate natural gas from your existing kind of gas facilities that you have there?
Yep, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, um, so we'd have to, uh, we'd have to run gas piping, um, from the plant to the, to the treatment plant. So from the mill to the treatment plant. And, um, so if I go the last slide where I've got the milestones and timing, uh, we've got initial permitting, um, that we need to get done. So that's environmental permitting. That speaks to all the, uh, emissions testing and all that stuff. Um, and that's three months away. Uh, the next one is permission to run a gas line from the, uh, from the railway, because we'd have to cross the, the railway line. That's three months away. And that'll include everybody, anybody else that we need to get approvals from. So be it, uh, plumbing inspectors, uh, fire marshal, um, all those people.
Pardon me, you probably, most of you may be aware that we already have a bridge over the railroad. So it's not a new, it's not, it's not a new bridge over the railroad. It's simply adding this to electrical and.
Sewer.
Sewer, telecommunications.
So you'd be using that same, uh, bridge over it as that, okay.
Um, equipment delivery, so that's the actual dryer and all its, uh, its auxiliary equipment. Uh, that's six months away. Um, and then installation, commissioning, um, testing, that's three months. So we've got a project completion timeline over here. And, uh, and that's it. If you've got any questions?
So the, uh, moisture in the sludge, when it's, um, when it's pulled out of the, out of the sludge, does it turn into liquid or does it evaporate and dry out for the process?
So it comes out as water vapor out of the stack.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So it goes in the air?
It goes in, yeah, it's released into the environment.
Any other compounds released with that, whatever material is in the sludge that gets evaporated and airborne as well or?
From the testing that we did, there isn't any, any, anything else that comes out. It's just, uh, it's just water vapor. There's nothing else. I mean, from the test results, there's nothing else.
They, they also did particulate matter testing, which is something that we do with our, with our other facility, and it was, uh, the one for the smallest particle size was a non-detect. Um, I can provide the, the data over for you guys, um, but they were all well within and well below, uh, appreciable limits, limits on there. So, there's not going to be a smoke or a dust, anything produced, um, in that. And the drying process is mostly the evolution of the water vapor.
In addition to that, we're putting a baghouse just to be, just to be a hundred percent sure that, you know, we don't ever have an instance of anything escaping, so.
Can you elaborate on that? A what?
A baghouse.
Baghouse?
Baghouse?
Yeah, so it's just a piece of equipment that, that'll trap whatever particulate matter, um, would potentially, you know, if there's anything, it'll be caught in there.
Like a scrubber.
I was going to say, essentially like an air scrubber.
Okay.
That sits at the end of the system.
Yep. And so that water vapor will pass through that and.
Yes.
It should condense any kind of particulate condense out before it releases, okay.
And this dried product, any type of hazards associated with it, either flammability or.
It's not.
Essentially if it's drier, it could burn easier and I'm just thinking.
No, we wish, so it's, it's, it's calcium carbonate, so it's pretty inert, um, and nothing organic. Well, there's, no, there's some paper, you're right, there's a little paper in it, but.
We have tried burning it.
Yeah.
You'd probably like to if you could, right?
Right. So we just currently, we do haul it, um, to Canada, and it's incinerated. So it is, it probably turns right to ash, you know, they won't really show us what happens. I don't know if you've got a better idea, but, God, we'd love to burn it, but, um, it seems pretty inert. Um, and no one's raised any flags around, uh, any, any kind of inflammability.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm asking mainly because I'm sure one of the ten thousand viewers would want that question asked.
Appreciate that, absolutely.
What about odor from the process?
We went to Indiana.
Yeah, I mean, from the test, from the test that we did, there was no appreciable, um, odor that came from the drying process or from the, um, the dried sludge actually is, uh, you know, it's much better than, um, than, than the wet, the current, yeah, so.
Right. I'm more thinking of, so that water vapor, how does that, you know, odor and, you know, does that end up conveying, you know, and the air quality nearby and things like that?
We didn't, we thought about it. We knew you'd ask, so we thought about it when we were in Indiana. We were at a turkey farm, uh, so it smelled like turkey. So ultimately, we, you know, we're not entirely sure, but our experience, we took a truckload, we ran it for a day, and there was no noticeable odor during that time period.
And during that test run, is that the run rate that you'd expect to be running the dryer here, that you ran the test at?
Similar.
Similar run rate?
Yeah.
That was one of our things that we needed to have happen in order to make it work for us and has to, has to keep up with us.
So it's five days a week, um, two shifts, three shifts?
Three shifts.
Monday to Friday, three shifts.
And then store it over the, the other two days, anything you have, and then run when you're back on Monday or not really?
We run it out, um, similar to how we would do it now. It, once we're, we're done running, um, our primary clarifiers are what is collecting the wet sludge, uh, already, and then we start up the press, the whole system up again on Monday and run it back down, um, by the end of the week. So, it, it'd be run it, run it until you're done.
I guess if it's down for any reason, you'd continue, you'd go back to shipping wet sludge?
Yeah, uh, yeah.
Or maintenance or anything something like that. You'd, that's, you know, you'd revert to wet sludge, which we, I mean, hopefully we don't have to ever do, but we already know how to do that.
Space for this within the existing footprint of the building?
Yes, so, um, it's, like I said, it's not a lot of, it's not a lot of equipment. Um, we, uh, we, we think we're going to be able to fit everything within the current footprint. Um, we might need to take one press out, uh, the old press. Um, other than that, we don't need much more space.
And I don't know, you want to speak to that other press? Oh, yeah, um, the DEP came, um, for their inspection. I inquired.
How'd you do on that inspection, Ethan?
We did, well, flying colors.
Is that on the record?
If you said flying colors, yeah.
I, I mentioned it to them and they didn't, they said there's no issue with having it removed. They, they, they said, as long as the town proves it, it's done.
Is it a backup right now? Is it not used at all or just the old one?
Yeah, we could tear down and repair the, the new one before we could ever get that thing started, I think so. It's, it's a giant paperweight.
That's a big paperweight. That's a big paper you're holding there.
So besides the cost to the machinery and, and the cost to install it, um, there's no other issues as far as the property's concerned? Any alterations to the property that would, uh, be a cost to the community or?
No, we, we won't be making any changes to the current facility.
Or the process, like, of treating that, the water. So, that part is separate.
How's it going to, with the, I mean, currently it goes up the conveyor into the garage with the trucks. Which simply, is that going to stay in place and then it'll come around and then back to the? Which simply, is that going to stay in place and then it'll come around and then back to the trucks or?
Well, we'll go, we can go out and around and then drop it back down, um, and then still maintain that in case we do need to switch back.
Okay.
So you'll basically divert it to the dryer system, be able to divert back to the existing wet loading system that's there?
Yeah, we want to utilize as much of what we currently already have in place. A, it's going to save us money and B, um, if we do need to ever go back, that would still be there.
Other questions?
We're pretty excited, I'm, I'm very excited, um, you know, this is, this is, it's an expensive, uh, operation handling the sludge and processing it. And it does our customers no good, they're, they don't like paying for it. Uh, and so we've been working for a long time to try to find a solution to minimizing this, uh, this expense. And, and managing the process and drawing, uh, we looked at pressure, uh, and couldn't really get there using pressure, but, and ultimately had to go to, to, to heat. Natural gas, we think is a, is a minimal footprint compared to, again, compared to those diesel trucks that are going up and down the road. Um, we think this is a, a win for, uh, our carbon footprint. And just a, a lot less, a half, half the mess, half the, the challenge, so.
Earlier in the slides in the background, the conversion to type one requires 75%, um, dry solid or 90%? Can you clarify what?
Um, so we're going to be bringing ours to, um, to 90%. Uh, however, depending on how we are classified, um, it might be between 75 and, it'll be between 75 and 90% to bring it to a type one.
So maybe, so we read in the regulations, I've only ever seen 90%, but somebody in the industry said 75, is that your take?
Yeah, I think it, it's dependent on how much we have to start and, and whether we can prove out that you, you can eliminate it at 80% dryness. Um, you can eliminate that fecal and the, the E. coli. Because it's, it's mostly industrial, very small percent is, um, from the town itself. So that, I think, factors into their deciding what temperature we have to reach or what dryness we have to reach in order to qualify.
So that ore in there is really just somewhere in between there is the tipping point you have to get, to get past the raw sewage piece to become type one?
Yeah, I think we're going to want to find the sweet spot between, what's the lowest, how much, how little?
Sure.
Energy can we burn to get to type one is probably where we're, is where we're going to be headed.
And 75 or 90 is still going to look dry compared to the wet hall right now, right?
Yep. So we thought we were going to be, when we got to the fluffy stuff, we really thought that would have been the end product. But then realized it's just, it's, it's a little, it would blow around and the volume wasn't reduced, the volume actually, you know, increased. Um, we got the weight down, but the volume didn't come down, so then we started looking at the second and third steps.
Any, all this equipment's inside except?
It's going to be, so the, um, um, most of the equipment's going to be outside, um, right next to the, right next to the building. We'll have a lot of the piping outside as well. So if I... If you look at the, uh, the slide that's got the, the layout, um, the asymmetric view, um, you'll see that, uh, there's two cyclones.
The first or second? The first or second one?
The first one, the first one.
That has the two views?
Yeah, yeah, that's got the two views.
Overhead, yeah.
Yeah, so all that piping that you see in there, that will be, um, it'll be hung on the building, um, either on the side of the wall or on the roof. Um, so we don't have the layout yet, uh, because there's going to, it's going to be a custom design for us. But the rest of the, uh, the equipment that's on there, if you look at the, uh, so there's two cyclones, uh, those, uh, two cones, cone looking, uh, pieces of equipment in there. Those are going to be outside, uh, there's the, uh, the cylinder that's in the center in, in between those two, uh, cone looking things, uh, that's also going to be outside. Um, and then there's the two burners, um, uh, which are the tanks that are lying horizontal, uh, those are also going to be outside, so.
Which part is inside?
Uh, so what's going to be inside will be, uh, the feed, the conveyor, uh, coming off the?
Press.
Coming off the press, um, the, uh?
Hammer mill?
The hammer mill, we're not, we're not, we're not too sure yet, we can put it anywhere, I mean. Um, but the briquetters are going to be inside, which is why we need to move the press.
Any type of noise pollution associated with that?
So there's, um, there's going to be blowers that'll come with this, with this system. Uh, but we have already spoken to the supplier, uh, to ensure that they've got mufflers in there to ensure, so that we don't create any noise pollution.
Does it have a rating on them, noise rating?
Yeah, so it's going to be, well, we'd aim for 85 decibels.
Where do we need to be?
I don't have it right in front of me, but it's not quite on speed dial, 67, no.
85 is considerably less than what the paper mill currently does.
From outside, okay. But this is at the treatment plant, not at the mill, so it's a little closer to residential probably.
Yeah, which, who's close to, to, uh, Stoneville? Anybody else really?
Prospect, East Prospect probably. I mean, a little closer than the mill, obviously, is, but close may not be relevant at 85, I, you know, just want to, want to understand what it was and.
Right.
I, I forget, I was, from the days on the plant, if it was 85 was the, the limit for no hearing protection, I forget what they, 92, somewhere in there. I don't remember the number, but it's not quiet, but it's also across the tracks and stuff, so.
It's clearly, it's, it's on our mind, we'll, we'll buffer, you know, get buffers and whatever we can to minimize the, the sound.
Just in relation to Route 2, what side of the building is this on? Or, or just is it on the, east, west, south, east?
East, yeah.
And so basically in the second layout there where you have the cyclones and, uh, linear drawing, where it's conveying out, basically it's going to go into the, um, auger and the briquetting and all of that. And that's going to be heading back into the building?
Back into the building.
And the conveyance into that first pre-dry cyclone or hopper is coming out of the building, is that kind of roughly?
Yes, yes, yep.
And most of all, the large ducting is just, well, forced hot air, right, coming off the blowers?
Yeah.
Emissions and all that, okay.
Assuming this all goes well, um, what's the estimated time of, of, uh, completion of this project?
One year after, after we get approval.
So at some point, there's going to be some formal approval from us to, for you to continue, at what step in this? I mean, are you looking at the environmental and such before or concurrently or right now, or have you not started that yet?
Um, so the environmental, we, we have, we have engaged the, uh, the company that's going to be doing all the testing and stuff. So they're busy with, uh, preliminary calculations, but we're not going to go ahead until we've got approval from, from the town.
And that's the same company that they, we flew them to Indiana and, uh, that's where the guys with the white coat sat down and, you know.
Sampled everything?
They were, they were out there and, um, um, so they started their process, you know, a, a few months ago, um, along with us.
Knowing it can be difficult, do you anticipate any delays or difficulty getting across the, the tracks with the crossing with the gas? Getting that permit?
Yeah, we, 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 we do appreciate that it might take longer than, 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 than we hope. Uh, we do have, um, uh, alternatives, um, so if we, if it takes too long or if it, if we're not successful. Uh, we've got the option of, um, having natural gas at the, at the, uh, at the mill, at the, sorry, at the treatment plant, um, so we'd have to.
With the town's permission, of course.
With, with the town's permission.
Would that require a similar docking station like you have at the, at the mill to be installed?
A baby one.
Smaller version of what you have, yeah, okay.
Or a possible propane?
Possible propane, um, yeah.
Really rough, I, obviously it's not the route you want to go, but really rough volume that you would have if it was on site? Like trucks a day versus what you're doing at the mill?
It was, uh, estimated to be one truck every two or three days.
Versus about four a day right now or something at the mill?
The mill, how many a day?
Oh, an X, oh, no, it's not an extra one, sorry.
No, that's fine, that's fine, yeah, in comparison though, the mill's doing a couple, three to four a day, right, okay? And this would be one to three days, okay, very different volume to your point, yeah.
Should that, um, well, Plan A, of course, is to go with the, the natural gas line, that's easiest for us and, and most sensible and most economical, probably. Process wise, if that doesn't work, I guess we should let you know as soon as, so we would, we're sort of moving, I think, we want to move forward the project with the pipeline, with the gas line. And when we find out that that's not going to work, if we find out it's not going to work, we'll come running back here and say, listen, we need to consider Plan B and Plan C and present that again. Is that, is that the way to do this?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so tonight we're presenting as if we're going to be successful getting the line across.
Right. And then the, um, surplus?
Or, or under.
I was wondering if someone was going to say that, but yeah.
Okay.
It may be harder, uh, to get than over, but yeah, understood.
Neither's easy.
None of it's easy when it's crossing.
Yeah.
As we, as we've all shared. The other one I had was something that slipped my mind for a question, uh, did you guys have anything else? That comes back to me. Oh, the press, um, if, if you didn't, okay. Uh, so the old press, so part of this obviously is the need to surplus that or to do something with it to make space here as well, right? Okay, so we'll need to consider that as well.
Is that a separate, if we dispose of that, is that a different, a different process, like?
There is a surplus policy and process for town equipment that we have, um, the, there's a form that can get filled out and, you know, is there value, what will we do with it? I think we would obviously work together on filling that out and understanding what, it's more of like what, what could be done with it, you know, consultation with you, with, with Pete. And then what would we do with it, uh, based on that? And then generally it's, it's three reads at a board meeting before we'll make a decision if any public can come, if they have questions about what we're doing with that equipment that they've paid for, you know, historically or whatever. That's a town asset and then, and then we'd make a decision at that point or at some, some point, three, three reads or later and give direction on what to do with it. Whether it was to be scrapped or recycled or sold or whatever that process looked like.
What's our timing on, is that something we would do ahead of time?
I think it depends on how, how we are going to install and then, yeah, it, it will, it would take, you'd have to do some disassembling to get it up and out. Other than that, you'd need a crane and, um, it weighs a lot, but.
I, I'd probably recommend just in the, in the formal piece of it from this side, probably earlier than later. Because once the approval's there, it doesn't mean it has to leave the next day, it's just that now kind of the, the, um, decisions and the conversations about how and what can be done with it have been completed. Then the timeline to do it is, is open to whatever makes sense, generally, I mean, we usually don't.
We touch with Brian and find out how to start that process.
Yeah.
All I need to know between you all and Pete is whether or not that equipment has a future use on property? Or if it has any value potentially on the market to be sold? If the answer to all those questions are no, and it's really just scrap metal, then we can proceed in that direction. So as soon as I have an answer to that question, we can fill out the forms and, and start that reading process.
Yeah, so a few pictures, can we use it? Could we sell it, somebody else could use it, if not, how do you dispose of it? Is that cost or is there value in the disposal? Those are the questions, there's a one pager that we fill out internally, so.
Right.
Pete, did you have something?
Yeah, I'm reverting back to, um, one of you had mentioned, uh, air scrubbers, are they charcoal air scrubbers, is that what you're talking about?
So just because he's not miked and he's not up here, the question was the air scrubbers that were mentioned, uh, are those charcoal or are they?
Um, so it's a, it's a particulate matter, um, baghouse that we're going to be putting in.
Okay, so second part is the air scrubbers, is that just over the vapor exhaust or over the drying, I'll call it the, the drying rock?
Um, it's going to be, it's going to be just on the, on the exhaust, um, just, um, yeah, the, the, the dryer exhaust, yeah.
Okay.
So where the vapor is coming out.
So capture all the dried exhaust or the, or the water or the vapor?
So, so, let me just repeat that.
Both are coming out, so, I mean, you've got, you've got, you've got one stack that's releasing, um, um, moist air into the environment. So that's where it's going to be, um, on the other side, you've got, um, you've got, you've got our sludge, our dried sludge going out. And we're not going to be, we, we won't have a, there's, there's nothing on that side because it's going into, uh, into other processes.
The natural gas burner?
Oh, oh, um, no, so the burner, the, uh, the emissions on the burner are well within the limits without, without the, uh? Without the baghouse. But whatever air is going through the burner goes through the thing as well, it goes through the baghouse, if that makes sense.
Yeah, the heat and the?
So they are both are going through the same stack, right? Yes.
Okay, because I, I know probably the concern of most residents on that end of town will be if there's either, either drying it or the, the moisture, evaporated moisture coming off if there's the odor problem.
And, yeah, and like we said, we didn't, we're not, we're not exactly sure because it was a turkey farm and, but from what we could gain.
We're just at the emissions from, um, oh, I guess it's at the turbine, not at the, not at the skid.
Yeah, our turbine emissions are checked by the same company.
Is it Alliant, Alliance?
Alliance.
Alliance.
Generally, the primary emissions is going to be the, the water vapor from the drying process.
Yep.
The dry product coming out really isn't going to have emissions, going to be solids at that point and fed into the briquette.
Yeah.
And any other gas coming off the?
Any dust is enclosed as well with that finished product?
It's all coming out through that process, okay. So that open auger they show there with the powder kind of is being fed, that's not open?
Yeah, that's not going to be, in our process, it's not going to be open like that.
Oddly, they were happy to leave it open with the turkey manure.
Stay there long enough, maybe you don't notice anymore?
They did, yeah, they didn't, they were like, what smell?
But there's a thing, I think, that would, just to recap what Pete was saying, so the air, the, um, particular baghouse will be on the, uh, emission side where the vapor, the drying system vapor is coming out. That's really the only primary emissions coming off of that process.
Yes, correct.
Except the actual gas, um, the natural gas heaters that are heating up that air, right, process air. Other items?
No.
For now, okay. Obviously, you know, we're going to at least take, take, you know, next couple of weeks till our next meeting to, to look things over, if there's more questions, we'll send them your way. Where are you at in your timeline, you know, I'm not sure how long we'll take to review and, and formalize, you know, any questions or further requirements or approval? How quickly are you looking to get going? How quickly are you looking to get going or waiting on this answer to continue, or is it, that's what you're waiting on now?
So, we're, we're anxious to get moving, right? The sooner we get started, the sooner we start saving. I'd say right now, in addition to the town, truly waiting for the, would you say, Paul and the word from the railroad? The railroad is our sort of biggest concern, hurdle concern. So, you agree?
Yeah, yeah, to a certain degree, I mean, the-
Go ahead.
Approval from the town is, 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 is most important at this point, yeah, because, you know, whatever happens with the railroad, you know, we'll, we'll have to see, see whatever, what other avenues we'd, we'd have to take, but without approval from the town, we really can't, you know-
Approach the railroad with full-
Yeah, if we're going to go, if we're going to approach the railroad, you know, we'll be approaching them, we'll, we'll actually be pressing the green button on the project.
Spending money, and we need to get a consultant, a railroad consultant, of course.
So, that hasn't started, that wasn't going to be my follow-up, so you haven't started that conversation with the railroad yet.
We've had the discussions, but we haven't-
Very high-
Haven't seen a bill yet.
You have to pay the fee before they'll review the plans.
Of course.
So, yeah, that's a good-
I didn't see that on our paperwork, where is that for us?
So, yes, to be clear-
It's a good gig if you got it.
To be clear, the town's approval is, is what we're waiting for.
Where you're at now, okay, all right. Well, I, I don't think we're at a, I don't think we're at a position to speculate yet exactly when that would be, or what, you know, what might take to get there. But this was a great intro to it, and I think it gave us a, a good starting point to kind of look it all over and, and review, and see if there's further things that we need or have questions about before we kind of proceed.
Anything, full transparency, so whatever you want to see or need to see to help test results, they're all available.
Samples for anyone that wants to, no?
More samples. Prove, redrawn.
Go ahead. I was just going to say, you mentioned carrying it to your next meeting, we haven't discussed your schedule yet.
We haven't.
But tentatively, the 21st, is there a date that we should tell the, the SCO team that we're looking to revisit this topic?
I think we'll definitely revisit in our next meeting.
Yeah.
I don't think they'll, unless there's something that comes up between now and then that's significant, you know, we'll, we'll probably get whatever information we need, questions that come out in the interim. Is the 21st work for everyone? I guess we can just talk about next meeting, just to figure out if we already have it penciled in. I believe I do too, so. It's a pretty empty calendar, so that's easy enough. Yes, so, 21st, we'll expect to discuss it again at table. Where we'll be at at that point, I can't say for sure, obviously, but that'll be our next discussion, and we, you know, we'll remind you and let you know it's on there, and if there's anything we need, we'll let you know. You're welcome to join, and, but I'm sure if we have questions, we'll let you know beforehand.
That's great. Thank you, Select Board, we appreciate your time, and look forward to your response.
Before you go, because I, informally, you did, but I meant to ask you formally, Pete, anything from your side, you've seen this preliminarily, anything that you didn't get answered, or you have questions about?
No, my one question was answered for now.
Okay.
I'll just a little more into it.
Absolutely. We're going to lean on you for your expertise, too.
Do you want details on the baghouse? Um, yeah, some of that.
Specs, I guess, okay.
Excellent, all right.
Thank you very much.
We'll talk in a couple of weeks.
My only sample.
Ah, yes. You need that.
I didn't know what to do with this one.
Eventually, the town will have to approve, like, our, these two for the D E Ps, when we make modifications to the treatment-
Got it. When we meet later on this week? Yeah, maybe we can go over this again? Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, let's see, back to the top, so, Bill, a couple, just, there's a few regs in here, right, and we had started on them before you started the term, the water regs and sewer regs.
Yep.
Water regs, after the last read, we kind of took a second full picture look at it and realized it was more of a rewrite than, than we thought, so-
Okay.
That's continuing, and really kind of a fresh rewrite that we'll see tonight, and then the sewer regs require a public hearing, and some other steps, so we, we did, just delayed continuing on them until you joined, because there'll be more steps to come, so that's going to take longer. So, those are ones that were in progress before you started, but still have a fair amount of work to go, so. We'll start with review and discuss proposed amendments to the Water Department Regulations, fifth read, come on. It's going to look lonely up there after that crew, by yourself.
I lost everybody.
So, after discussion last time, there's a lot of, a lot of areas, wait a minute, which one, do I have them mixed up? There was a lot of areas that we wanted rewritten here and adjusted in the water regs.
That's correct.
I was mixing them up for a second in my head with sewer regs. So, you guys went through and did a full kind of overview rewrite of them, based on that feedback, and where we saw a lot of duplication and other things? And that brings us to tonight.
And we'd sent out a redline version like a week and a half ago.
Right.
And it probably was a little overwhelming to see all of the different colors and where everything went, so the, the version in your packet is the clean version of all those changes, but we do have the redline version if, if you want to see that.
If we need to, okay.
You included that with your-
Oh, that's right, as a separate document.
Separate document, yep, so we had the redline separately, and then the, the clean from all of those edits, right? So, I guess, anything that you wanted to highlight that you thought we needed to review further after those changes? And just in case there was anything that you saw that you went, I, you know, wanted the board to look that over, or kind of provide some feedback on. If there isn't, that's okay, I know you guys went through the whole thing, so.
I don't believe we had anything.
Okay.
I think we caught, we believe we caught not only everything that you all mentioned, but then as we reread things, we literally get out of a whiteboard, and went section by section, and if we found something that we thought was addressed somewhere else, we reconciled the two and made that adjustment, and then reorganized everything, which is probably, again, why it looks so overwhelming with all the colors.
Absolutely. Half of me wanted to say, we talked about it, half said, just start with a clean copy, and we'll pretend it's a first read again, but it's good to have it just for reference.
Yep.
So, for the board, anything, questions, comments, concerns, areas of note?
I'm just speeding through, just, so, to, to start in Article 200 definitions, I believe, we talked about striking shall mean from all of the definitions, because-
We did.
By virtue of it.
And sure enough.
There are still some showing, beginning with backflow, which I think is a simple enough adjustment.
Meter has it as well, there's a few still in there. P W S.
We thought we grabbed them all.
Yeah, maybe a quick search for the phrase might grab the rest of them.
I thought the rest of the document, as I read through it, captured a lot of our discussion, and it read and made a lot of sense, I'm just zipping through real quick to make sure.
It's daunting on me that we did break up the section, scrolling right here. So, we had shut offs and municipal liens on one article, and that seemed to be, it came from the, the previous version of this in that manner, so we kept it that way, but then in future, in further review, it didn't seem to, to make sense, because there's other, there's other instances where you may need to perform a shut off. So, we separated those two things out. Something that was tucked under other sections had to do with the processing of abatements, and that felt like something that should have been called out as its own section, so we did make that suggestion, and so now it reads municipal charges and liens, then goes into the abatement process, and then it gets into the shut off. That felt like it read, if I was a user of the water system and I wanted to understand everything, that felt like a natural order to expect things to appear, but that was a change that I forgot to mention.
The one other thing that I know we talked about a little bit, and I think I got caught a lot, but maybe not everywhere, maybe not everywhere does it work, but the article subsections having titles, the first four don't. I don't know if it's further than that. And then at dash five, application for new service, then we have permit required for connection without a section, subsection heading, but it's bold like it is, so I don't know if that's supposed to be 380 dash six, or if that's really just supposed to be part of the application for new service.
I think when that got moved, that was in a different section, that was bringing
It's really just like you merged into five without a separate heading?
the two things together. It just missed, probably from the redline version over, we didn't capture those, the subsection reference, so I just need to add the 380 dash six, and everything else will reorder, renumber below it. That's a good catch.
And following this, there's a difference between an application for service and a permit for connection? Because the first one talks about the application for new service, and then the second part that doesn't have a section heading, a subsection number, talks about desiring connection or other permit. Maybe just, just read through that one one more time, and whether that's really two separate sections, are they different things, are they just different terms for the same thing?
I think-
That are kind of not melded together fully?
Different terms for the same thing, we just need to clarify it.
Yeah. So, maybe it's a permit for connection, new service or otherwise, and, and kind of clean that up, maybe it is in a separate section. 380 dash 10. Again, that, I think is, I think connections for fire service lines prohibited, from fire service lines prohibited, it's, should it be its own section? Or should 380 dash 11 be, you know, prohibited connections, and should both of those be listed under it, as a section for prohibited connections? Because this cross-connection prohibition is 11, so, could also make 11 into prohibited connections and list more than one, or, or create 11 and 12.
I think the two combined, you know, it's 380 11 A and 380 11 B would make sense.
Yeah, prohibited, yeah. 380 dash 24.
You said 24?
Yep.
Okay.
It happened twice, the second one didn't. It got, it blanked out, but it's still there. You saw it as soon as I said it.
Yep.
Under 380 dash 33. We have A, B, C, D, A and B. No A and B, the second A and B are blank, but they're there. Three- You're looking at the redline, so I'm looking at the clean, just because it, but it's after A, B, C, D, then there's another A and B that must have got hanging from the edits.
Must have.
You see them on there, yeah. They didn't actually clear out completely with the edits.
Yeah, they were stricken, but-
But not fully.
Survived.
Exactly. They survived the blank.
I was learning.
This is, there's a lot there, I, this is not, this is not criticism, just, just a little more cleanup on the first read.
It was a big, big lift.
380 dash 37 is not bold. Okay. When you're ready, 380 45 has 48 blank after, and then goes to 46. Done. And 47, and then ends, so.
I think there used to be 51 sections, and after we removed duplications and reorganized everything, I think it-
Yeah, it was shorter, actually, yeah. Out of curiosity, is there a reason why we list various tap sizes under, two inch and under, that have the same fee as separate rows, in Appendix A, sorry, in Appendix A? Is that just for clarity on the various sizes we allow, or, it doesn't matter, I just didn't know.
That's a good question.
Why doesn't it just say three-quarter to two-inch, or three-quarter, comma, one, comma, one and a half, comma, two? Is all a thousand?
That has been like that since-
I'm sure it has.
The last adoption, and I don't know the rationale.
Sure, I don't know if there is, maybe there is.
And I don't know what you all would do differently in the future, I know there's no proposal to change the connection fee.
Sure.
So, I don't know that a future board would want that level of definition, in case they wanted to change those connection costs, but that's an interesting question.
I find it interesting, three-quarter, an inch or a thousand, inch and a half and two are also a thousand, then we jump to two, and everything else steps up by 500. A little surprised that your one and a half and two aren't 1,500.
For some reason, I thought there was a 1,500 in there at one point.
It's not a type, it's not a-
It's not a-
We didn't change that section, right? So, it's not a typo from before, is it?
Let me- No, these are from-
I mean, we haven't edited them.
Right.
So, three-quarter to one inch is a thousand, next line, one and a half to two inch, 1,500, and then you jump to four inch, 4,000, and so forth.
Yeah, I just pulled the regulations from 2013.
Yeah.
And that table is exactly as it is from 2013.
Do we have that many different line sizes going into structures, or?
What do you get for connections usually?
They're usually, for residential, it's usually three-quarter inch to one inch, I usually try to advise them to go with one inch. And then usually, inch and a half, four inch, six inch, eight inch, 12 inch, that's mains out in the street.
Or fire. Like a suppression system.
Uh, you, that has to be at least a six, usually.
Six, yeah, six or more.
Yeah, but like inch and a half, two, do you see that much?
Never.
You get it at all? Never?
Never.
I think the last two we had was, I think the library was a two.
I don't know if that is.
But we don't have many.
I mean, I, I just, I would propose we increase it, just because it seems odd.
But those two is 15?
Yeah, I, I, I think I would, whether we leave them as separate lines on table or not, we put three-quarter and, you know, or one inch at a thousand, and an inch and a half, and two inch at 1,500. Does that make sense? I mean, it's proposed anyway, we'll see it on the next copy redline.
Yeah.
Okay. In the Appendix A, the shut off notice is not bold. Not sure why we call it a shut off notice, to turn it on? Does that make sense in the water world?
Notice was a holdover, we can, we can just strike the last part of that. It's just shut off related fees.
Shut off related fees, and have the second one be restoration.
Yeah, so it's fifteen dollars to shut it off, it's forty dollars to turn it on? But that's not a shut off, right? That's a turn on? I think that's my point, is like, they sound counterintuitive, right? To your point, is like, shut off, or restoration, or, or turn on, they're two different things.
Just make them the same, as far as the dollar amount?
Then you're going to make me come up with that other word that means both on and off, I can't think of what it is. I mean, it's the only thing that's under forty dollars, really, or thirty dollars, I guess.
Go ahead. I was going to say, is there any world in which somebody would have it shut off and not want it turned back on? I was gonna say, is there any world in which somebody would have it shut off and not want it turned back on?
No, unless, the longest we've had, we've had a couple of residents, if they go to Florida for the winter, we shut them off. When they come back in the spring, they'll call us and then we turn them on. I mean, nothing that's, you know, that sometimes is a five to six month, depending on who the resident is.
I think unless you're actually like destroy, like demo and not replacing, not gonna ever be turned off all the way, right? It's gonna come back on someday.
Right, we've turned them off basically to winterize them for the winter.
But those are by design, not because they failed to pay a bill and we've gotten to that point.
Right, shut-off notice sounds like an, a town action, not a request.
Service suspension fees?
Turn on, turn off. It's the same process either way.
Lefty loosey, righty tighty, right?
That's the only thing that changes.
So the effort's the same? I'm just saying, if the effort's the same-
No, I agree with you. It should be on or off, right? It's like the same, right? Yeah.
It's a valve.
Right.
So in my opinion, it should be the-
On off, yeah, no, I think it should be and just consolidate it.
Well, just in terms of consolidating it, to Pete's point, there could be months in between when service restoration's requested and you're not gonna wait until the restoration to do the initial billing?
No, no, no. It's a fee for turn on or turn off is the same.
Agreed.
Is the proposal, right?
Yes. Oh, I thought you meant-
No, 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 it's gonna be like service change to turn on or off forty dollars.
Got it.
You want it on, it's forty. You want it off, it's forty.
Right.
You want it on again, it's forty.
Each occurrence.
Each occurrence. Yeah, maybe that's what you need. Service change, turn on or off per occurrence, forty dollars.
Okay.
Yeah?
Sure.
Temporary connection, same thing. I don't think we should be turning a hydrant on or off for a different price. It's thirty down there. And it should also be per- When you hook up to a hydrant, are you charging them to turn it on and to turn it off?
To do-
A temporary connection on a hydrant?
Yes.
Is it usually more than a day apart?
Yes.
Okay. So same, same thing? Temporary connection? So it's not a hydrant fee, it's a on-off fee for a temporary connection, right? We don't even need to have hydrant in there probably? Under temporary connections?
Okay.
Should be on-off fee, you know, per occurrence or, you know, service fee and then the cost of consumption.
Got it.
Anything else that anyone saw in there of note for tonight?
Thank you for picking those up.
There's a lot there and it was a full, I mean, it's basically starting over. I mean, there was a lot of work, so it's like starting over. There's a footnote on packet page fifteen. It's appendix C that says, I believe this can be removed because we adopted something, but I don't know what that means.
I think that is a holdover from a previous note in-
Okay, so we'll clear that note out because it's just a, just noise.
Yeah, that was the, um, let's now, uh, civil site by law.
Yep. Yep. All right, I'm, I picked up on some of that stuff, but the content, I need another read for sure too, so see that. So we'll, we'll carry it for our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
And so for the next one, we'll provide another red line version so you can see what evolved from tonight's meeting to the next version.
Yeah, cause it's gonna be small and a lot more readable than the last one.
So we'll carry it for July twenty-first.
Please.
Of course.
Review and discuss proposed amendments to the sewer use regulations, fifth read.
There are no changes from the last time you've seen this document.
Which was last meeting?
I think you passed over at the last meeting.
Okay. That's why I couldn't recall if this really was a fifth read or not. Maybe it still is a fifth read.
Should we go back and double check?
That's okay.
I thought we agreed to pass over at the interest of time based on-
We did.
The transition from Scott.
I don't recall if it would make it a fifth read or not, or if we had been at fifth already. There's no title of section dash one, but I don't know that we have titled any of those because it's just the opener.
Right.
Anything anyone saw in here for discussion or note and all the edits from superintendent, from director to superintendent and public works to wastewater department, just cleaning up that language.
I have no questions. I took me a while to follow what was happening between the red lines. So I did follow that.
Okay. This one didn't have as many changes, so it's a little, hopefully a little more straightforward.
To select my Benbury's point, this was last adopted in two thousand and ten, I believe. And the formatting and the structure of these regulations seem different than the water regs. Our suspicion is that maybe council was involved with either repairing or writing, or EPA was involved. So these are just in a very different structure and so the board's past reviews have been more just like clarifying language. There was references to positions that we don't have, so we fixed that. And then we gave it a, a structure in terms of subsections that the past version didn't have. So going back through and fixing those, those references so they all matched up correctly. But substantively, we haven't changed anything else. The thing that's missing is your fee structure in appendix B. The regs have always talked about a fee structure.
Right.
There just isn't one that was with the document. So, um, so what I put there is a cut and paste off of the application that has been used by the department for the last decade. But even that document said refer back to the ordinance, which doesn't exist.
The ordinance.
So, um, that is a place that we're lacking, is the fee structure that goes with this regulation. But the rest of it seemed largely to be in good shape.
Okay.
It, it looks like we use Department of Wastewater and Wastewater Department interchangeably. Do we want to? Or do we want one or the other? Cause in the beginning, it's Wastewater Department. And then further down in definitions, if we continue on, it says Department of Wastewater.
I will make it all read the same. How do you want to read?
Wastewater Department.
Okay. Any concerns?
None.
Okay. In definitions on the publicly owned treatment works, we reference the three, we reference known as with the locations or the, the treatment location. But they have numbers. I would add numbers in there. So if we talk about POTW number one, that is-
Permit number mag five nine zero.
Well-
Cause that identifies the plant.
Yeah, if you want to, sure. So in the definitions under the POTW, it says any treatment, any of the three treatment works is defined by section two, two twelve of the act, owned by the town of Irving and known as Irving Center Wastewater Treatment Plant, which, I mean, is that what it's named as? Is that what it's known as officially?
That's what the big sign on the wall of the building says.
That's what the permit says, okay. That's fine. The Firely Wastewater Treatment Plant, so the POTW number three, you know, that kind of thing, the references so that they're, they're easier to tie out. Um, and then Millers Falls Wastewater Treatment Plant Works. I don't think that's what it says on the side of that building, or should.
I don't know that that one has a sign.
I don't think it does.
Yeah, on the, on the actual exterior of the building.
No, there, there is none.
Irving Center is, you can see it from here too.
But it wouldn't say Millers Falls.
No.
So that's not correct anymore.
At one point it-
I was saying nineteen seventy-
No, no, and that's fine. The reg, the reg is old, right? So I'm just like, that is not correct reference to that building any longer. So we should update it accordingly.
Okay.
So it's Irving Side Wastewater Treatment or how, what do we call it, other than POTW number?
One.
One, yeah. One, two, three will mess me up forever, but that's okay.
Yeah, there's, there's a shuffle there.
One then three then two, yeah. Anyhow, whatever the proper naming is, it's just, just in that definition, let's pull all those pieces together, right? It seems like it would be useful to, to put all that in that single definition, so it's clear.
Your mag permit, or your, they're not gonna change, they're not likely to change. But if they did change and we put them in here, then this document has to be updated again. So it may-
The permit number, you mean?
Right. I don't think it would change, but if they ever did change-
Have they changed since the seventies?
They've changed once since I've been here. But back when they started renewing the permits, um, you're supposed to renew them every five years and they kept giving us extensions, extensions. We did extensions for probably twelve years till they came up with the new mag permit.
And that was a recent change, like three, four years ago.
Two years ago, then we adopted a mag permits.
I guess I would ask them and clarify, if they're gonna give you a new permit number potentially every time you renew, then I wouldn't put them in there. I'd just put POTW number one, you know, Irving Side or whatever the, the proper name is and vice versa. But if they're gonna be the same, potentially expected to be, then there's no, no harm in that. Did you see anything else on that one, on the sewer reg?
No, I was just looking back on that schedule B. If you wanna wait, are we going back through or? I know Brian had referenced, there's nothing there.
Right.
And it's referring to an ordinance which doesn't exist.
Right.
So my questions would be in terms of the difference between new connection applications from residential, commercial to industrial. Is there a change in work required to review and approve those? Are some more inclusive or more in-depth or are they?
Not really. It's just the, the size.
The only difference though, on a commercial and or industrial, potentially, could change what's being sent to the plant. Not so much on the review, but one may require your pre-treatment program.
Pre-treatment program. It'd fall under the pre-treatment program.
And that does require more work by the department. And potentially that may, I, I'm making this up, worst case example, but if you had a, a significant contributor to the system proposed to come online, it may be something where you'd need to engage the town's engineer to understand if there needed to be some type of change to the operation of the plant because it, say it was bottle wash or say it was a paper mill coming back online or something like that, that was putting a lot of material through the system that would change the way the plant operates. Potentially, we would have more, much more work to be doing and you may need your consultants to engage on the review of the permit. So there could be examples on the industrial side, maybe not so much on the commercial that we typically see. Small, small commercial operations I don't think would be that significant.
No.
So if we're building up that fee structure, we could set an application fee and then maybe have further definitions under the industrial of where additional costs may be incurred by the applicant to satisfy specific needs of the connection?
The connection, sometimes they defer to, so if you had to upgrade the system at the plant itself for industrial users, they reverted that fee to the industrial user.
Can we just put, they may, you know, they vary, like in industrial applications, they vary by requirements for specific-
Right, I think that's-
Industrial, industrial, you know, demands and will be, you know, assessed and, or will be reviewed and determined on a case-by-case basis. Something to that extent.
Yeah, that's the language.
If they're so broad and varied, I mean, if-
It really depends on the proposal.
Not to plan earlier tonight, but if we had suddenly had another water, I, I mean, a paper facility that wanted to move in and have a paper plant.
Right.
What we have to do would be completely different and costly compared to what, and some of those burdens can be passed on or may be required of the applicant.
Right, that, that's when you'd get into detail, engineers involved, the BOD load into the system, all that gets figured out.
I think we just need to make sure that we leave it open enough that we can convey any and all fees necessary on a project of that scale. Your residential user is going to have a basic fee and that's that, but someone who's putting in large volume.
I just said, you know, to Brian's point, if we need to build this out, we need to start somewhere. So I'm just saying that, you know, we could establish the fees, forget about the ordinance, these are the fees. And based on the commercial application, it'd be reviewed on a case-by-case basis and subject to fees associated with engineering, structure, processing, whatever those individual items may be. Or considering but not limited to, so that we have that if there's some, you know, a paper mill wants to come back online and they wanna bring in a, you know, a drying facility for their waste to save money and resources, you know, it would require a lot more work, but.
Let me try to find some language that speaks to what you all are describing. And, um, and then we can wordsmith it some more in next meeting.
Yeah, maybe look at some neighbors who have larger facilities that have more industrial base too. What they have for language, I mean, they may have exact fees and we may not want that, but, and I think to your point, some examples. This is not meant to be exhaustive, just representative of some, any and all, you know, may be considered.
Right.
Let me just add on to it that it would fall under the pre-treatment program.
Right. Okay. I think it makes sense. Any other specific notes? All the references to ordinance, do we need to just strike those? Do we need to look at each one?
I mean, we don't have an ordinance right now related to the sewer system, so we can strike that.
Right, I mean, anywhere it's referenced though, is there anything that we would need to, like redirect it to? I, no, not from what you guys saw.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's possible that your predecessors were anticipating having an ordinance passed, but-
Sure. The schedule A, the local discharge limits, are those hour limits or are they DEP limits?
Where, where is that under that you see now?
Schedule A.
Second to last page in the-
Yeah, twenty-five of the pack, of the policy, I think.
For the reg.
That would be our limits?
So the limits that we set, the local discharge limits, okay. So number two, we need to change that treatment plant name accordingly. For the Irving Center Wastewater Treatment Plant, it's, well, let me, let me start over. For schedule A one, it says discharge the Irving Center Wastewater Treatment Plan, it's plant, right? Correct. Okay. The, we have A through D there. When we look down at two, for the Irving Side Wastewater Treatment Works, which, I don't know if we want works or plant for both. It does, it has A through F. Is there a reason we don't have the penta-chloro phenol or the trichlorophenol at Irving Center limits?
We, we get a letter from them every year that goes into our pre-treatment- We, we get a letter from them every year that goes into our pre-treatment program report, certifying that they don't use that.
They don't?
They do not.
Test it, or they don't have it?
They don't use it.
Oh, okay. We use it in Irving Side?
They used to. This is for industrial.
For them discharging into?
Correct.
So we have the limits, but this is on the Irving Side plant. We have limits? Do we still have industry discharging that?
On our side?
Yeah, on, on...
No.
POTW 1?
No.
And we don't have it on POTW 2?
There are limits on number 2. Because it's industrial.
Is this backwards?
Now we're into industrial pre-treatment.
You still have limits that the mag permit has?
Correct.
And so if you had another user apply to come onto the system?
This whole number 2 is when the IP mill was up and running.
Understood. So let me back up. Because I don't maybe need to understand it as much as I'm asking the question the wrong way. The Irving Center wastewater treatment plant should have limits for those, correct?
Yes.
So we'll add that in Schedule A and fix that?
Sure.
Okay. Because we have them on Irving Side, we should have them on Irving Center as well. We do have them, they're not listed here. That's what you're telling me.
Yes.
Okay. So we will establish the daily maximum limits for those two on Irving Center. And add it to the schedule.
Okay.
Please. Does that make sense? Is that clear, what I'm trying to ask?
And I don't, I think where you're getting at, bottom line, if I understand you, is just because we're getting an attestation that they're not putting this into our system, we should still have a...
A limit.
Right. We do still have one, you told me.
We do.
So it should be in here. Yes, 100%.
I understand. So part of the work, we may have to update this again. So there's a NEPTES permit that has been up for renewal for quite some time. POTW number 2 did not get the mag permit a few years ago that the other plants did. So we're about to start that process, the reapplications, next year. So we may just have to update that again, but we can make the change for the current information?
Sure.
And then can you also pull the mag permit and what the allowable limits are that were recently issued to make sure that the Irving Side section is up to date? And we'll do both of those?
So they, they follow two sets of limits. They follow the DEP EPA limits, and then they also follow our limits. That's part of the pre-treatment program.
That's fine.
We can break them out and list them in this if you want, or they're already in their reporting information that they have to send me?
Well, they have specific limits because of what they're doing. But this schedule is industrial use limits that we impose.
Correct.
Whether we've imposed them on Irving Industries specifically or not, they should be in here because they're limits to industry, period, right?
Yes.
Do we have any for Farley?
No.
They're not allowed?
There's no industrial. And I don't think that you can do industrial there. You can't. It's too small. It's a sand filtration plant.
And from a zoning perspective, we don't allow it, so...
Okay. I don't know how we put it in there, but I think we should probably have, you know, Farley plant not allowed, or something just that, that kind of calls it out because it is a plant that we have and it's just not listed.
Okay.
So I don't know what the right wording would be. You know, local discharge limits, none, not applicable, not authorized for that type of use. You know, something like that, but just so that all of them are listed. Obviously, it's not going to be a copy of the limits because it's not allowed.
Right.
You could just reference the zoning restriction.
Exactly. Some reference to it. And we talk to Schedule B. The only notes I had is there's some sections that 37 to 39 don't have titles, subsections.
37 to what?
39, the last three. And section 13, 14, and a few others, a bunch of the subheadings are bold. I don't know if that's intentional or not. Some subheadings are, some aren't, in different places. So just take another look at that, just from a consistency in formatting. So 345, 13, 14, 18, 22, 32, and 33.
Okay.
I noticed, just have some, some bold, some not, so from consistency. If that's meant to be, then we may need to add it somewhere else if it's not. Just clear it out.
Okay.
Anything else on the sewer use regs? We'll look at a red line from, there was no issue with any of the changes that were redlined, right? We're good with the ones that were in there so far?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll adopt those red line for, from tonight, for next meeting.
Carry for next meeting?
Yep. And hopefully we'll be ready to schedule a hearing soon.
Excellent.
On that one. Great. Anything else on here for you tonight, Pete?
Senior housing pump station utility improvements, tie-in bond, are we going over that? I think that's the only thing that would...
All right, well, let's jump to that one then. 14, section 14 in our packet, review engineering proposal for water and wastewater on Care Drive. That's the one you're talking about, right?
Yep.
That's page 162 in our, in our packet.
So we had just gotten funding for the sewer system expansion engineering for the water line, but... All right, walk me through this, because I think I'm missing something here.
This is the topic that you all discussed a few weeks ago when you were near the SDM. You've had an existing appropriation since 2019 for sewer expansion on Care Drive to support senior housing. You completed that work back in 2019, maybe the beginning of 2020. The price was extremely advantageous towards the town, and it didn't use the budget of 226, so you've had 149. But it was limited to sewer. I believe it was Chairman Smith who suggested taking it to town meeting and asking the voters for permission to also allow it to be used on water. And the voters said yes at your town meeting. So you had previously authorized that only wastewater could proceed, but tie-in bond declined because there's no, there's no efficiency to doing that work. You would be out there redoing the second work when you do water.
Okay, got it.
So they have just been waiting all these months to see if we could identify a water source, or funding for the water portion. So the request that we have in front of you is, now that town meeting has approved the expanded use, that the select board reauthorize engaging tie-in bond this time for both water and wastewater for tasks 1 through 3.
Okay, thank you. So they refuse to waste our money, which is nice of them.
I mean, it was very polite and professional.
Like, we're not going to do this because it's going to waste your money and you're going to pay the money.
That's exactly, yeah.
Which is very, I appreciate that.
It didn't make sense to proceed, yes.
Yeah. What threw me was the 149 versus the 128. I'm like, it's less to do more. It's the appropriations, it's not the authorizations from last time.
Correct.
So the 128, 500 is for 1 to 3 of water and wastewater combined?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Now I'm, now I'm caught up. Speed.
I'm glad that was explained, because when I read it, I was confused as always.
My apologies, that wasn't my...
No, it's not your fault. It's like a couple different things from long ago coming together.
Years of...
Yeah.
Yeah, we've been talking about this for a while, haven't we?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm new to it.
And Bill probably talked about this before in his last...
Yeah, we talked a little bit about it.
All right, so in front of us is 1, 2, and 3, water and wastewater engineering tasks for a pump station, unexpected pump station.
Right.
And improvements. And water line. So what is 1, 2, and 3? Preliminary, final design, and permitting?
Right, just before bidding.
To get us to bidding, but not through bidding?
Okay. That hopefully allows us to have a more refined opinion of probable cost. Hopefully, we have some progress before the fall, we hear on the Housing Works grant. If Housing Works is successful, then we'll have the funding to proceed to bid in construction. But we haven't committed to doing that yet, so...
But we're in a good, good, like, kicking off point at that. Better cost, better design, and ready to go once we can find funding?
Exactly.
Okay. Other questions or concerns?
My, there's a motion related to this, and so my only concern was that the Senior Housing Committee had voted on this and moved it forward to the select board. Should I abstain from voting on this, or can I, as select mid, now vote on it again? Do you stand to gain individually?
Personally, don't, right?
No, I don't.
There's no individual...
Yeah, but I think there's no reason not to.
I don't see that there's any violation of...
I agree with Jim. I, I, you know, it's up to you if you want to.
No, no, I trust, no, I trust you, Jason.
I don't think either of us are concerned you're going to be rich from this project.
If that's...
Any other questions or concerns?
That's where we're at. I'd be prepared to make that motion if you're looking for one.
Please.
I will make a motion to engage tie-in bond for professional engineering services related to the senior housing pump station and utility improvements on Care Drive outlined in tasks 1, 2, and 3 for a cost of $128,500, and to authorize Brian Smith to execute all necessary agreements.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome. Any other, any concerns or questions on it? You're good, right, Pete?
I'm good.
I meant to ask you, but, okay.
So we'll get that back to tie-in bond tomorrow and schedule a kickoff meeting and talk about next steps.
Yeah.
Great. All right. Anything else for Pete? Anything else for us?
No, if you don't need me for anything, I have more homework, so...
Not due tonight.
Right.
All right, great. Thanks, Pete.
Not even due tomorrow.
No, it's not. To get a little time. Thank you, Pete.
Yeah, no problem.
Have a good night.
You, too.
See, review of the memorandum of multi-year agreement with the Franklin County Housing and Redevelopment Authority for the administration of the housing rehabilitation program.
Scroll back to the top.
Yeah. I'm jumping around a little.
So that is section 3.
Section 3.
Section 3.
Page, do you have a page on that by chance?
42 in your packet.
Thank you.
Is there an easier way to get to this?
I think so.
And this is, I see the box comes up with...
So yeah, if you type 42...
Into this box?
Yeah, where it's blue now.
Oh, okay.
This one right here, it looks like a bookmark, that second one.
Yep.
You click on that. The sections are here.
Ah.
And if you click the arrow next to section 1 there, the little arrow...
This here?
Yep. They'll collapse, and you can see section 1, 2, 3, 4, and then 4 is here, you can collapse it. And you can click on those, and they'll jump you to those sections.
Oh, okay.
So we're in section...
We're in section...
This one, section 4.
4, 4?
Uh, section 3, excuse me.
Section 3.
My apologies.
Click 3, it'll go there, that's where you are.
Ah, right there.
Sorry.
I might grab a mouse, because I think that's going to help with navigating as well.
Yes.
Oh, this is new, too. I mean, the format is totally, totally different.
Yeah, it's changed a bit. We can run through a quick tutorial, too, later, for another day. Did we get feedback today from them on the edits?
Feedback came back from council earlier in the week, no concerns.
Okay.
And I did receive feedback this afternoon from the housing authority, and their response was that the red lines matched their understanding of your conversation from your last meeting.
Okay.
So they don't have concerns. It did add the language, and I renumbered it at the end. I think it's section 7 now, the renegotiation clause.
Mm-hmm.
Hopefully, that speaks to what you were looking to achieve. That meets what I was looking for.
Okay.
Yep. And then in appendix, I know the appendixes needed to be updated. I think I caught them all. But your new appendix E, I believe? I don't know. Did I miss one? That was E, I think I have one more to change. So I have one more to change. It looks like I need to change that last one to F. There were a couple options where we had to fill in some missing pieces of information. So I checked off that there would not be an age restriction on eligibility. $70,000 is going to be the max loan.
You're talking about appendix B?
No, all the way towards the end. I'm on, now I'm on page 67.
Because these same things were on appendix B, right?
It felt duplicitous, but...
Because appendix B, we did the same things. We said 70, we had 100 AMI.
I made the match.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
I don't know why they're in there twice. The, the appendix on 67 is in much greater detail.
All right, hold on. Jumping back and forth a little bit here.
All right, but that is what we discussed.
Mm-hmm.
I believe so.
That, I think it was...
Oh, yeah. So D is, we have E to D, that's going to be F?
It's going to be F.
On 67?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm following, kind of, now.
Too many appendices if you are that far into the alphabet.
Going back to appendix B Bravo original. It is highlighted, but we discussed, we could move forward with the agreement in principle and develop that language. It's currently, for the other use of funds, it's calling out for a process.
Mm-huh.
Am I correct in remembering that we would sit down with them at a later date and develop that process?
Yeah, so we could, where it's currently highlighted in that blank space, just call out that it will be determined through a separate agreement of the select board and the authority?
I mean, because that's, remember from the conversation?
Yeah, that's a good point.
As it is in an appendix, it wouldn't hold up approval moving forward with the agreement. And we can, I just want it to read a little bit cleaner than... Leave it an open-ended question there.
Well, and I think they're just modeling appendix A in the same section, which says they will, if required, submit a request to AOHLC for reprogramming the funds for the town's use. If they're our funds, there is no ELC submission required. So I think that's where that question becomes like, and then? It, it's probably the, the next two sections that actually matter to replicate over, right? It's, it's just if we like to have them, which is there, right, to administer it, they can negotiate a fee for that service.
Right.
Don't really know that there's any...
And that negotiation actually is the agreement that you all will strike?
Right.
So maybe it's just striking that, that call-out?
So it might be just what's in, if you look at appendix A 2, in the second paragraph.
Mm-huh.
First paragraph is the one where it's dubbed right now, which is like, HRI will. It says... It says, you know, "If it was approved, we can administer ourselves or contract HRA to administer it." And I think it, maybe it's just HRA will, if requested, negotiate to, um, it's really just that last paragraph. I don't even think we need the "HRA will." I think we just strike it. "If they wish to use the funds for another purpose other than home improvement, the town may elect to have," and just make it all one paragraph, "may elect to have HRA administer that other activity using the funds." And then we'll negotiate a fee. I think if we at some point want to put other language around how we might determine if we can use the other funds, we can add that in ourselves, but that's really self-regulatory.
Right.
It's not HRA regulatory, regulatory, so.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, I'll make that change.
Okay.
Did you want to carry for another meeting?
I think, bring him back a clean copy just one last time. Does that make sense, or do you guys want to act on it tonight?
I could look at it one more time.
Okay.
So make those changes, send you a clean copy, and we'll carry to the 21st.
Please. And you can let them know that changed to Appendix B, Section 1, Section 2, Section 2. Just in case they have any concerns or something that they were expecting to be filled in there that we didn't just discuss. All right?
Got it.
Okay. "Review of Modular Office Procurement for Public Works, Section 4, Page 70."
There's no changes from the last time you saw this.
2-1, so what it says, they should have a common area, so there's expected to be a hallway between the two office spaces? Or an actual common space?
Sorry, one more time.
2-1, Section 2.1. Two offices. Two units with two offices each, right? Not four offices each. And each unit should have a common area as a corridor?
Mm-huh.
Is it a common area or a corridor? Because a common area would assume that there's space to work, right?
Depends on the design.
But it's not a requirement?
That's the question.
That's my question.
It could be both. We've seen models that do both. There's a practical potential application for a, so like, a shared common space that could be used for rolling out plans, this table and chairs for somebody to come have a meeting with the superintendent. Is that a drop-dead requirement? It may be something that you put in the comparative criteria as a, as a highly advantageous part of the design, if it had it, versus an absolute requirement.
Okay.
The bigger point is they're not going outside and back in the other door, so it's not two units on the same trailer.
Each with an exterior door and no adjoining.
That's, yes.
But that is what I'm trying to clarify. So first, I'm reading this three times, going, "Now I think it says two units with four offices each." I may just want to be clear that it's two units with two offices each for a total of four spaces.
We can add that to make that clear.
Just, yeah, because I don't want to think it's two modular units with four offices each.
Got it.
We'll have a unit with four and a unit with four, we'll have eight offices. Just want to make sure that's not confused, because it's supposed to be two with two each.
Ah.
Follow what I'm saying? I just read it more, and then I tried to say it, it sounded confusing, so. And then this, this common area, internal corridor, could just be a door between two offices. If it's, if it's two offices adjoining with a door between them, does that meet that criteria or not? And I just want to be sure that we are clearly defining if that is acceptable minimum or not.
And that's only a conversation that the three of you can have.
I understand. I just, I'm trying to say that, to make sure it makes sense, that... So just hypothetically, picture a trailer. It's probably got two exterior doors that go into two offices. If they have an adjoining door, does that meet a common hallway or interior criteria? Or do we truly want a common space hallway that may also have room to work? So there might be two offices with a common area in between with adjoining doors for each. And that's very different in what we're gonna get.
And is it one door in the middle, and then on the interior, there's the...
And that may be okay, too, you know, but, but that's, I just, I think it's the common area piece that I'm trying to be really clear about.
Right.
Are we just saying that two offices need to be adjoining? They need to be able to get to them inside, between them? Or are we saying that we do need a common space in, between the two offices? And if we need a common space that adjoins both offices, that can be accessed from the offices, then whether or not there's one exterior door or two, there's two interior doors, and that's the important part. I just want to make sure we're clear about what that expectation is.
I think it was...
It's clear as mine, I know.
I think it was a preference to have a common space in between.
I would think.
That either could be used for file storage or for, for meeting with an applicant on something that doesn't necessarily fit nicely into the office. That there may be a little more space in a common space like that is an absolute must-have. I don't think it necessarily would be a deal breaker.
The modular units are the same size regardless.
As we went from vendor to vendor, there were slight variations in all of it, which is, I think, why the, the state has created this RFP process, because I don't think you are going to ever find 100% apples-to-apples in the comparison. So I think you do need to have the grading rubric to look at the comparative qualities of each of the proposals, because there will be a variation. If there's a bare minimum, like finished space must be 10 by 10 in the office space, for instance. You may get one that's, well, ours is 12 feet wide, but that's because we have more insulation that gets you to that 10 by 10 finish, where another one is 11 feet 5 inches, and that, you're gonna see all those variations, you know? And that's fine, that's the product that they sell. But I think we have to be ready to say the bare minimum is blank, and we will think favorably on these features or run different on this other piece.
Which is where I want to be clear, because I did look at these with Glenn and Brian at different vendors and extensively the various things out there, and they are highly varied. It could be, you know, offices on the ends with a common space in the middle with a single entrance, dual entrances on the side with a shared common with no exit. It could be, you know, a shared common space at one end and then two offices in series. So there's so much variation. I just want to make sure we, at a minimum, have defined what we must have.
Right.
And so if that is a modular office unit with two offices, both adjoining a common area of at least, I don't know, 8 by 8 or 10, 8 by 10 or, or something, then we know we at least get that. Whether there's three exterior doors, one exterior door, whatever, we don't care, but I just want to make sure we get the minimum need. Some of them had a 20 by 10 or 8 common area with two offices on the end, and they, maybe you walked through one to get to the other, I don't remember, but, you know, that kind of thing, or one had an outside door, one had an inside door, you know? There's, there's a lot of different options. I don't want to figure all that out, I just want to make sure we get at least what we need.
Right.
So these modular units are just office space?
Correct.
Nothing else?
There were units that had, like, restroom facilities in them, but where we're installing them, they'll be right next to the treatment plant, which has full, full facilities. So there's no need for that in the units we're buying.
It's just cost.
Yeah.
We figured having utility, having facilities was just extra cost.
And it's more, we're gonna have to then tap into the sewer, we'd have to tap into the water system, we would have to make all of those connections, which further makes this more of a permanent installation than what we were initially hoping for.
So water-wise, would they just leave the building or have bottled water within the building?
It's, the buildings will be adjacent, right, to the existing facility, so they would go into that facility for that.
Yeah, so they have the regular break room and everything in the, in the main facility.
The electrical, we would be putting a pole in next to the installation, there'd be a separate meter for this facility, and then the electrical telecommunications and the mini-split, so the air source heat pumps that would be associated with the project all come as part of the equipment, so it becomes pre-wired.
So the language there about heating and cooling will be by way of contractor-installed mini-splits, is that meant to be the provider, contractor-installed?
Contractor, yeah.
Being, yeah, okay. It's terminology, but it's right?
Yeah, you're buying, you're buying almost completed units, but they're gonna finish some of the installations, so are they a vendor or a contractor, we probably should just add a definition that says they're the same.
Okay.
But I can go through and clean up that language if that's helpful.
So back to my first question, do, so we want to be clear that we want two separate units, each unit will have two offices with a common area?
Yes.
Accessible from either office, so that it's central?
Yeah.
Yes.
Makes sense.
Rather than having to go through one or something?
Right.
So the offices should be adjoining a common space? Or it should contain a common space that is accessible from either office?
Yep, that reads better, I might, I would understand that.
And then that ensures we get common, two offices. However else they lay it all out, we don't care, but that gets us that.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else in this that anyone saw? Concerns, questions? Do we need to change anything in 2.3i based, oh, sorry?
I was gonna say, in 2.3i. Offices should be 12, so are we then making that a hard requirement, should versus shall? And what tolerance does that allow for 12 versus 11.5 for insulation, or, since you brought it up?
So if it's a requirement, we should put it as shall, and then the comparative criteria, we should make that the bare minimum for what is acceptable versus not acceptable.
The way it's worded right now, it's not a requirement? It's a nice-to-have?
Yep, so we can make that firm.
Okay.
The exact finish area, we, we put 12 by 10, but that's for the finish, so it would be wider on the outside. If you're willing to go down to 10 by 10, we can word it that way, or we can keep it at this 12 by 10. The reality is when you put this out...
I won't be working there, so.
Well, I think the reality is when you put this out, you're gonna get questions, we're gonna get feedback. If we need to make an adjustment or clarify a requirement, we're going to have to issue an addenda of some sort, so you'll have...
So if they come back and say, well, they're always only a 9.5, they're gonna come back and say it, they're not just gonna not bid, is what you're saying?
That's my understanding.
Okay, all right. I think that's what you're getting at, right? Does it have to be that big, or is that not the reality of the norm, and instead we box ourselves into a corner?
We've issued addenda and upgraded or updated the comparative criteria on other RFPs before, based on feedback that we've received through the procurement process, so.
Okay.
All right, so leave it as should versus shall, and that opens it up for the question.
Agreed.
And we aren't painting ourselves into the corner.
So S, 2.3S?
2.3S, did you say?
Yeah, S is in SAM, so 2.3S. The second, third sentence is 23?
That's gotta be one more.
I don't know what that was supposed to be. Is that supposed to be in T?
Yeah, I think that just needs to go down to another line, a separate line, because that's talking about the finish, the decorative skirting that...
That's a requirement, okay. So there'll be U and V now? Okay.
Good catch, I'm slacking.
I had to step up. New audience, you were, you were best at me in that stuff for a while.
Challenge accepted.
On guard. Let's see, obviously you'll update the dates from June when we get this done.
Yes, I, whatever...
Completed by, so what do we think is realistic? Should it be X date in 2025? Should it be like 90 days after, or do we have a...
I don't know if these are gonna be custom or if they're going to be off-the-shelf type things. I don't know what the lead time is on a product like this, so I don't know that we could successfully say 90 days.
Okay. Well, the second clause says we, we can extend it based on consultation.
Absolutely.
So, I don't know. I just don't know where to even start, but we want to put something on there, we don't want it open-ended.
To me, I, I always think from a snow-flying standpoint, and not that these can't, not that the prep work can't be done in advance and these can't be dropped on site, so maybe it's a little bit different, but typically somewhere around the November 30th timeframe is usually when you want to be wrapping up that type of site work. We don't have a paving situation to deal with on this one, like we've had in other jobs, so could you still do it under, you know, climate weather? You could, but I don't think we want to be in the middle of December, January, February doing this. I think once you get to that point, we may have to start having a conversation about holding off till the spring.
So how long do we need? So just, I mean, hypothetically, we could either adopt it as a minute tonight or do it in two weeks, but we put it out, what's the timeline?
I think it's at least four weeks to get a response.
Okay.
You could, because I'm anticipating questions that we're gonna have to respond to.
Yep.
It's a week to advertise, even if you give me approval today, it doesn't go live till next week. At least another week for questions, optional site visit to the site. Then they need to put together their RFP response. So probably early August, mid-August, we could have responses, in theory. You make an award in the month of August, and so September, October, November, you're already at 90 days.
90 days, yeah. Okay. I guess either way, whether it's 90 days or we say, you know, November 30th or something, just for a...
To start.
Obviously, they can challenge that, and we can negotiate otherwise.
Okay.
Does that make sense to you guys?
I think if 5-1 is November 30th and we shoot for that and...
Okay.
Let the snow fall where it may.
6 and 7, 6-1 and 7-1, your font is a little small, which is okay, but...
I'm gonna fix all the fonts I did.
Okay. I'm not gonna worry about those anymore, then. Any other comments, concerns, questions on it?
None.
Good with the comparative evaluation criteria?
On number four, quality of work, how do we, how do you measure this? I don't...
So that is, and I'm trying to think of the last time that we used a, a metric like that. I think we held something like that in the, in the, maybe in the sale of the school. I think you all reserve the right to go make site visits, to talk to clients and see the product in person. So that is an available, we don't have to keep that, but that is a way to go out, does require us to leave town and go see their work, following up with, you know, clients, past clients, about the experience that they had, and, and, you know, there was the install, and then there was the time after it was installed, did they continue to perform the way, you know, they were, they were promised or what they expected through the procurement. If that doesn't feel as meaningful, we could, we could find a different way to try to speak to the qualitative experience that it would be speculative for us to just look at a proposal and assume what it's gonna be like to using it. This was getting at, what's the lived experience of maybe other municipalities having done business with these companies and the actual spaces that they were provided? Did it meet their specifications? But again, if there's a different way, you think that we could measure that, we could change it.
Were they providing those... Were they providing those references as part of the submission, did I miss that in there?
There was a requirement, can't remember the exact section, but yes, we did ask them for a number of references in the last period of time, in the last few years. I'm afraid to search this document, because it will search your entire packet.
If you start, if you search when you're at the beginning of the section, it will start in that section. And go down, rather than from the first page.
So in, what section am I on? It's page 78. Section 9.3, all the way down to subsection L. So this is dry to anybody who's watching this at home. It lists all, a list of all state and local government customers with projects similar in scope to this procurement. With contact information includes name, address, telephone numbers, email addresses that can be used by the evaluation team to review the offerer's ability to complete the specified work.
All?
All.
All? Yikes.
Because you don't want somebody to pick and choose.
That's fair.
If I was asked for an offer, I would give the best, right? We want to make, we want to be able to talk to anybody that they provide.
Wow, okay.
And I didn't just, limited to Massachusetts, I can if you'd like me to. I mean, obviously, we...
I mean, New England.
We're not going to travel everywhere, but if they're in Massachusetts, we'd probably want to maybe go take a look, but if they did this work in Maine or Connecticut, I don't know why we wouldn't call them as well, just to understand what their experience was.
Yeah, I mean, to me, this is like reference, the quality is like reference checking, right, you're gonna call, understand their experience.
Right, you may want to see it in person, if it was local and it made sense.
If it's on the coastline, I'll make a site visit. I'll take that.
You'll take it for the team? And you'll even take it if it requires an overnight stay and a dinner? Okay, thank you for finding that, I didn't know where it was in there. But I'm glad it's there.
It's been a few weeks since I've looked at this, but I knew we definitely put that on there.
As long as it's in there. Any other, are you good with that criteria, based on that? Okay, other concerns, questions?
All of the highlighted yellow dates will auto-populate once we, or you will...
Soon as I know when you say go, and it sounds like I'm using November 30th as my current completion date until we have further conversation, I'll backfill in all the other dates.
So are we looking to see an updated copy, approvals amended, something different?
I would say, looking at the timeline, I'd be comfortable approving as amended, so that we can, because again, you got four weeks, and then we counted out roughly 90 days to that deadline, so. Yeah.
You good with that, Bill?
I am.
Okay. And I'm gonna assume that that dates, just for clarity, will be based on going out on the 16th, Wednesday the 16th, next week?
It could go live next week on the 16th.
Yeah, going live on the 16th, and then adjusting a site visit from there, and anticipating submissions back mid-August, whatever date you determine within mid-August, so that we can review and hopefully award by end of August, beginning of September.
Exactly.
Does that work?
It does.
Okay. Would one of you like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the Town of Irving request for proposals 2025 modular offices for public works, as amended.
Second.
And authorize Bryant Smith to execute all documents relative to this RFP.
Are you seconding that?
Second.
You're good, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Review and potential approval of the co-responder clinical professional support services agreement with clinical and support options. And so, our last meeting, we discussed briefly that we did not have any award yet from DMH for the co-responder program to continue in FY '26. We then found that they gave an award for three months, for 90 days, well, approximately, not quite, through September 15th, not September 3rd. September 15th.
If I had to guess, the state budget ends on September 30th?
Got it.
So I'm assuming they're trying to wrap things up those last two weeks.
They get a few weeks, yep. So they gave a, basically, a, almost three-month extension for $44,000, so that can continue. The other part of this is obviously the agreement between us and CSO.
Correct.
For the clinician. We obviously hope that we will see more funding for the rest of the year for the program, but, you know, we'll also be looking at what does it look like if that doesn't happen, and what can be done at the same time. And as we get into FY '27 budgeting, it'll be something that we'll be looking at, Chief will be discussing and looking at on the front end of what are options if this does not continue from grant funding, so we're not looking at it after the year's ending and it wraps up. So, the, this is for us to continue the co-responder with the surrounding towns and CSO for that same period that we've received the partial grant funding.
That's correct.
So through September 15th?
Correct.
Okay.
And we anticipate having sufficient funding with the $44,000 that was granted to support that program for that period.
Yeah, everything's prorated.
Basically, in the same, right, in the same terms and method that we have the last three years, just annual, just for this prorated period, instead of annual. Any questions or concerns about that?
None.
This is a point of order, where to make the recommendation or make the motion. Do we have a defined chair moving forward to execute these, or do we need to establish that? I know we were gonna wait for the realignment.
You could identify a member to sign it, rather than relying on a title.
I suppose you could, yeah, because the proposed language, you could just not say chair, just say person.
And it would be for, on the third line down of the recommended, it would be for a term...
A term, beginning and ending, I wouldn't put that one year, just strike that one year.
Yeah, that's true, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion to enter into an agreement between the Town of Irving and Clinical and Support Options, Inc., to provide co-respons clinical professional mental health services to the towns of Irving, Bernadston, Gill, Leverett, Northfield, and Warwick, for a term beginning on July 1, 2025, and ending on September 15, 2025. And to authorize Jacob Smith, on behalf of the Select Board, and Robert Holes, Chief of Police, to execute all necessary agreements.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Discussion regarding the summer schedule? This is really looking out, what do we want that to look like, and obviously, if we need to adjust, we will. So we talked about the 21st, obviously, two weeks out. I don't know if people have plans over the summer that we should adjust around, or anything of concern, otherwise we'd just tentatively expect every, every two weeks.
Sounds good to me.
Let's see, that puts us...
21st, the August 4th.
August 4th. The 18th.
Then August 18th.
And then September 1st is the holiday, I assume, this year?
Let me find out, hold on.
I believe that is.
It is September 1st, so that would be a holiday. So then that puts you at September...
We could possibly do a different night that week.
Oh, true.
You know, maybe, or, or... Or we could do the 8th.
Wednesday the 3rd.
Yeah, I don't know if Tuesday the 2nd or Wednesday the 3rd, something like that makes sense. Or do you want to wait and figure that out when we're a little bit closer, to where we're at with the volume of business and such?
Yeah, let's wait and see.
Let's wait and see.
We'll get through the next two months and tackle what we can, and then, I don't have any plans. We have very loosely structured plans for maybe an extended weekend getaway in September, but nothing in stone, I'd certainly work around that.
Okay. I don't think I had anything that precluded me through the summer, otherwise. And the 4th. Jury duty, but I should be out meantime. Sounds like a reason to skip jury duty, I have a board meeting, sorry. Don't think that works. All right, so 4th, 18th of August, and then we'll, we'll determine from there. Okay. Pass over meeting minutes?
Yes, please.
Review and approval of the agreement with the Franklin County Solid Waste Management District for household hazardous waste collection. Really, I mean, it's a variety all related, so we've got that one, we'll have the hauling and disposal of solid waste, recyclables, bulky waste, and scrap metal. And then the hauling and disposal of sledge. Any questions or concerns about those annual renewals? I think that's section 10.
Is our previous discussion with Ursaco gonna impact our hauling of sledge in any way?
No. They're on a completely separate arrangement.
They manage their own, right, they manage their own relationship and cost for that?
Yes.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to confirm.
Can we haul ours over there to get dryer? No, that's another story for another day.
Let's see how theirs works out, and then maybe it's a capital project for the future, if it has a cost benefit.
That's a fair point. Any concerns or questions on those in general?
I didn't have any.
I do not have any.
Okay.
The agreements are right next to you for signature.
Yeah, the actual ones here, if you...
They came today in the mail.
For the various, yeah. Sure, I think we'll get them, again, obviously.
You want me to tackle the motions, or, Bill, would you like to, or?
Uh, yeah, I'll do one. Just looking to see what I'm working on.
Language in your packet?
I think on page 123, I think it is.
I couldn't find the packet.
It's section 10A.
Page 123 of our packet.
Section 10A?
10A, yeah.
Yeah, 123.
Or page, yeah, page 123, the other... It's that lengthy drug policies in there that are scrolling through.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Town of Irving and the Franklin County Solid Waste Management District for FY '26 for household hazardous waste collection.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the second one is a, make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Town of Irving and the Franklin County Solid Waste Management District for FY 2026 for the hauling of recyclables, and hauling and disposal of solid waste, hauling and disposal of bulky waste, and hauling and disposal of scrap metal and appliances.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the third, make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Town of Irving and the Franklin County Solid Waste Management District for FY '26 for sledge hauling and disposal.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. And we have review and potential vote regarding the drug-free workplace policy and the council on aging van driver program.
So, um... The document is a request from the Franklin Regional Transit Authority. As you're all aware, the council on aging has a van service that we've operated in collaboration with the FRTA for many years. The van service is federally funded, and so even though the equipment is operated by us, it's maintained and it's owned by the FRTA through that federal funding. As a result, the requirements of the federal government have to be in place for this program. So we were signing our annual agreements with the FRTA, and we were presented with a request to have you all adopt that policy, which talks about the drug testing and the reasonable suspicion, and all the things that we actually practice here. The challenge that we're gonna have is that that document is much longer than our policies, as it relates to this topic, and so there's likely not a meaningful way for us to reconcile our existing policy with this document that the federal government is requesting, and therefore the FRTA has to require of us. So we have a few options, the first is to decline. I've discussed what that would look like with the FRTA administrator, it would look like us losing the van. Our residents wouldn't lose the service, but we would lose access to run the service. So I didn't think that that was an avenue that you all would want to explore. The other option is to adopt the policy without trying to reconcile the 10-plus pages that we would have to add to our policy to get all of those details in there, which would change for the rest of our staff. I think the likely recommendation that council and I would make to the three of you is that you would adopt this policy solely for this program, but then we have to go back to our personnel policy and make a couple edits. We'd have to talk about the policies that we have pertaining to all staff except for, and create a carve-out for this program. Another concern that council raised, and I got council's feedback today, he's been working on it for the last week and a half, but I got it this afternoon, it didn't make sense to send it to you all and ask you to read the red line, so I'll send it to you after today's meeting. The red line would also mean that we have to update our drug-free workplace policy. A few years ago, when you adopted it, we tried to reconcile the fact that while the federal government treats marijuana as a, as a drug that is prohibitive, in Massachusetts, it's legal, and so we acknowledge that off-duty hours, we aren't monitoring what people are doing in their homes, as long as they're not coming under the influence to work. That does not comport with the federal requirement, federal just says all activities under that schedule, so it would require us to just strike that acknowledgement under the Massachusetts law. I've reached out, I'm in the process of communicating with the towns' unions to make sure that there's no concerns about that change, I've heard back from one, there's no concern. So I'll just double-check with the remaining union. So I do have that feedback from council that I want to get to all of you. It is a bit time-sensitive, unfortunately, we didn't receive this until later in June, mid-June. When I realized it was an issue, I immediately called out to the FRTA, and when I finally was able to connect with the administrator, it was the end... When I realized it was an issue, I immediately called out to the FRTA, and when I finally was able to connect with the administrator, it was the end of June, so it didn't make it in time for your June meeting. This was the first opportunity we had a chance for you all to look at it. But I don't want to go too far into the year without this being resolved. Otherwise, FRTA, understandably, they have to honor their obligations, would have to discontinue our service until that was rectified. So I don't know if.
As of when, or they just said in general?
I was given that they would do their best to work with us and give us a little time in the month of July.
Okay.
To be able to work with council. They understood I had to take this to council, and they understood that I had to schedule a meeting with you all.
Yeah, okay.
I made it very clear that the three of you were the only ones who could adopt policies like this. So I don't think it makes sense to ask you to adopt all of these revisions till you've had a chance to look at council. The council's recommended edits are minor. Council did spend time going through the entire federal policy and may have called out a couple things just to bring your attention, so I think you want to also have some time with that. So maybe we carry this to your July 21st meeting with all that feedback, and I will see if FRTA can give us until July 22nd to rectify, if we can, by that date.
Sounds good.
So we'll see markup or comments from council.
Have it today.
This week.
Yep.
We'll get confirmation from the remaining agreement, CBAs, that they have no concerns with.
Correct.
Moving to the full adoption of drug-free again. We would have edits to our personnel policy.
Create a carve-out for the disposition.
Which would just say that disposition has this.
Has a specific policy.
Yeah, additional policy applies to it.
Correct.
And then our drug-free workplace policy edits.
Correct.
Really, it just strikes.
Correct. The rest of it.
Mostly it's striking out, they're not really adding anything, so. So we'll have all those this week, we hope.
I can send them to you tonight.
Some of them.
Yep.
We'll get everything hopefully by this week, next week to look it over, and then 23th.
You're saying by tonight? I, I would have sent it earlier, but I didn't want you to be trying to read council's edits. That was just unrealistic.
How about tomorrow?
Fine, you can have it tomorrow.
We're not going to look at it tonight, so don't send it tonight.
Yeah, I'm thinking of work-life balance, let's tomorrow.
Tomorrow's good. Tomorrow's good. Tomorrow gives us plenty of time, and there's still some open items left. Does that make sense for everybody?
Yes.
I think directionally, is that what we likely are trying to do? To keep it going as is and adopt these things as necessary?
Yes, that makes the most sense to me.
If you want to convey that to them and like, if they can work with us for the rest of the month as we get these things, you know, buttoned up, we're, we're looking to be able to do that and comply and continue a.
Got it.
Program as structured.
Okay. Okay, I'll convey that back to the FRTA.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you. Review and potential appointment to the museum committee, Candace Gore.
You're potentially quickly filling that board.
Yeah. Any concerns?
No concern.
No motion? All right, welcome a motion.
I'm sorry, I, that section is.
Yeah, I'm looking for it.
It's going to be on.
Yeah, I'm looking at a promo section, I'm in 15. There we go.
Page 185.
185, 75?
I went the wrong way.
185?
Oh, sorry, 175.
No, I thought in my packet I added those agreements.
When I heard, when I heard a point. Well, your pages are off tonight. I'm like, what are you talking about? It's page 175 in ours. 175 is.
I make a motion to appoint Candace Gore as member of the museum committee for a term of two years beginning in July 7th, 2025 and ending June 30th, 2027.
I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye. So we only have one vacancy left for one year.
Excellent. Review and approval of the equipment operator position description. Do we have confirmation that that is a vacancy? Or is it pending?
I did not get, it is pending. I did not get a, a full confirmation today, but we anticipate it to be confirmed.
Anticipated, yep, understood.
So my memo was clear enough, Superintendent McCory is not recommending any changes. He thinks that the updates you made last year were complete, but he just wanted to ask you all if you had changes before he recommended proceeding with advertising.
Any changes or concerns?
I have no concern.
I have no changes or concerns.
Okay. And then for a screening committee, the recommendation was a board member, highway superintendent and a highway foreman. Any concerns with that?
No concerns.
Anyone want to be part of that screening? I, I can do it, but if one of you would like to, that's okay, too.
I'm going to be honest with, I know you're on a couple. Yeah, the other ones that I'm on right now and where my bandwidth is and the reason why our summer vacation got pushed to September is.
Yeah, I don't have a problem being on, on that committee.
Okay, well, I don't either, but if you want it, you're welcome to it, so.
I'll do it.
Okay. That's fine with me.
Need a motion for that?
I do.
I will make a motion to appoint Bill Bembry as the select board representative to the hiring committee for the equipment operator labor position.
I'm going to say you delay that a minute while I make a motion that we establish a preliminary screening committee for highway equipment operator, consistent of three members. Period. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
I will second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then if you want to appoint Bill and the other members, make a motion to, we can.
I will make a motion to appoint Bill Bembry as the select board representative to the equipment operator labor screening committee and Glenn McCory, superintendent, to the same committee. And Thomas. And Thomas Duffy, supervisor. I'm sorry, getting late.
That's fine, it is late.
Did I catch everything?
I think you did now.
Okay. Thank you for the prompt.
I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
In terms of putting this out, as soon as we get confirmation that there is an opening, we'll go ahead and begin advertising?
Yes.
And then set the timelines from there?
Got a couple, yes.
I did want to raise that to the board on that same note, having a transfer potentially from highway to fire. The timeline of that transfer, right, is something that had been noted as a, you know, may need to be fluid, but I.
From highway to.
From highway to fire, so creating this vacancy in highway, and it is summer season and everything, and just transition period and hiring. So I know there's some tentative ideas on when, but I did want to ask you guys if you have a strong feeling about how long or when that transition should or shouldn't happen. We need to, we need to maintain services, you know, this is an ad for fire, but it's a vacancy for highway, so. I, I don't know your thoughts, so if you had thoughts, or if you're okay with whatever the two of them sort out. Tending to feel like we should require at least a, some period of time to allow to hopefully find a candidate or at least get well underway before we have a vacancy. I don't know your thoughts. I'm also not inclined to hold someone back, we're not trying to hold someone back, but continuity service.
So are you, is your question, have we done this before?
No, my question is, do we want to stipulate how long that, that they have to continue working in highway before they can transfer? You know, to, or let the highway superintendent and the fire chief sort that out? Or at a minimum, you know, I don't know if we want to say there's a minimum time that there has to be for a transition or not. That's all. Same thing we tried to do with senior center, director of senior services, but obviously there's, that was capped.
Yeah, it's a delicate balance because if somebody is looking to make that change as an improvement to themselves and their career desires, I wouldn't.
I guess I'm not, I'm not thinking it's open-ended or until someone's found or anything, but I'm also thinking, do we say it's, you know, at least 60 days or something, or 90 days? Give a little bit of time, we haven't even, if we, you know, if it was three weeks or something, we won't even have candidates, a candidate pool before that happens, and it's summer season and, and the things that are going on. I just want to make sure continuity services too, you know.
And I think I'm answering my own question in my head, but just to say it out loud, if, if that payroll capacity was open in highway, would there be an opportunity for temporary help? But now I'm thinking was some of the requirements of this job and the fill-in would require licensure and certifications that maybe wouldn't be open for a air-quote "summer" job for somebody, or would that open up the ability for an overtime opportunity for existing staff? Would the.
I see what you're saying.
I don't know. Or would they have any interest?
True, there's that too, yeah, yeah.
Not to place a.
I mean, we don't necessarily have to decide that or, or direct that, I just wanted to bring it up to. I think there's an understanding that this is a shift and that always has an impact that we have to be thoughtful about, too, so. Or we don't have to weigh in. Just wanted to bring it up. My concern is it'd just be too short, that's all.
Right.
Think it over, and we can always talk about it next meeting if there's a need to stipulate something. How's that sound? And we'll try to get some clarity on where that's currently planned. I think that's like July, but I don't even know if it's been accepted yet, so.
Is this transfer filling a vacancy?
It's the new added fire.
The new added position.
Correct, in fire. It'll create a vacancy in, in highway, but it's an added position in fire, yeah.
Okay.
Again, not, not knowing if it's going to be accepted or has been, it kind of puts this a little bit in limbo, but I think tentatively it was, there was some discussion about just the end of July, which is very quick.
So filling that position leaves highway short.
Correct. Correct, which will, as soon as we hear, start advertising for, but if there's, you know, if it's only like a two, three weeks timeline, four weeks, you know, say even our average is like four weeks at most, right, Ty or someone? Even if it's a four-week transition, I don't even know if we'll have a screening committee meeting by then, let alone candidates, you know, interviewed, so. Just, just being thoughtful to that, so. I can talk with the chief and the superintendent about that, too, in the coming week, and then can talk about it again on the 21st.
Yeah, I, I guess my, my gut feeling is, is that if this was a large department, it wouldn't be an issue.
Right.
But it isn't.
Exactly.
And so to, to make one department short, to add a position, doesn't seem the logical thing to do to me.
I think to your point, Jim, we don't want to hold someone back either. We're excited to have them grow and, and change, so. The, striking the balance, right? So why don't I, I'll, I'll talk with them both and, you know, soon we get confirmation that it's been accepted, that they're going to make the change, I'll talk with the two department heads and come back on the 21st with what, what further discussion we've had, and then maybe it's just advisory that they have a plan and it makes sense, and maybe it's just to inform you, and then if we have any concerns, we'll let them know. Does that work?
It does.
Okay. Review and approval of treasury warrants. So as authorized by the select board, I approve the 26 payroll warrant for FY 25 in the aggregate amount of $210,653.19, and the 26 payroll benefits warrant for FY 25 in the aggregate amount of $33,894.48, both with the date of July 3rd, 2025. And then I'll make a motion to approve the first accounts payable warrant for fiscal '26 in the aggregate amount of $960,932.39.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I want this here for review. We will have one more, expect to have one more AP warrant for FY 25.
Debbie's going to run FY 25 this week, and you'll have FY 26 next week, so there'll be a few warrants.
So the FY 25 AP warrant will be ready for signature on Monday.
That's correct.
So just, that's a FY heads-up. We will all need to go in and check it and sign it next week, Monday, Tuesday.
I'll get that.
Because that'll be the, kind of the out-of-cycle AP warrant for closing out last year.
Correct.
And then we'll have the payroll warrant, which I can take care of or, or whoever, next, next time.
Correct.
Okay. If I didn't miss anything else, I believe we're circling back to FY 26, select board reorg and liaison assignments to close out tonight. Is that the last item? It is, right?
It is.
Okay. I'll take it. My battery says the same. Almost done. I don't know if anyone.
So am I taking selectmen best rest?
Well, I guess the first question is, who wants to be chair? Does someone want to be chair?
Going to make a motion to appoint Jacob.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Okay, yes.
I will make a motion to appoint Jacob Smith as chair of the select board for fiscal year 2026, beginning on July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026.
Second.
I tried to pay not to have that happen. No. All right, I will accept it again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen, for your faith, and if something changes, I'll let you know, we'll revisit in terms of my availability. In terms of assignments, so this lists what they were with Scott. I guess the question mark is, does anybody want to change him around? Do you want to just take on the liaison role for the departments that Scott had? Or do you want to make any changes? That's either of you.
Unless Jim is looking to make some changes, I know he's, he might, might want to change something. If not, I'm very happy with accepting the, the offices and committees that Scott held, so. I'm fine with that.
I only, how about you, Jim?
I have no concerns. I'm happy to continue that.
I only have one, maybe, comment or question. I wouldn't call it a recommendation. Bill, you are on the senior housing committee, correct?
I am on the senior housing committee.
As a member. So then if you are a liaison, I don't know if we get into a select board conflict if you're both at meetings, talking, and does it make sense that maybe that role swaps with something else? And you take the liaison role as well because you have a seat, rather than, I don't know, I'm proposing a question.
That's a great point, and I think that might get sticky and it could create a problem, so if there's, I will certainly, I agree with that, but if, Bill, if there's something, you know, to balance that off, if there's something on.
It's like first-round picks around here.
What's that?
It's like first-round pick.
Yeah.
If there's something you want to trade back, is that what you're thinking?
Right, because in, in fairness, you get when. Because in fairness, you get when I took this seat, I asked to not have the board of library trustees because a family member serves on that board, and I was concerned at the time of any potential conflicts, but as we discussed earlier, there is no substantive gain that I will make if I was that liaison, so I don't believe that would be a conflict, but I also, if there's something else that, I know the senior housing committee might be a heavier lift than the library at this time, but, you know, if there's something that you'd want me to take in exchange for that, I certainly will, and I'll yield to your choice.
Well, I'm the newcomer, so whatever you want to exchange, I'd be happy to do that. I don't have any problems.
Dealer's choice, huh?
If you both don't decide, I'm going to pick something for you.
I was just going to say, chair, why don't you break the...
Oh, my God, okay. And just for reference, before I figure that out, Sloughman-Bastarash is the rep for FERCOG, which I think is not listed on there, right, as a rep?
It's above. It's up above.
Right, but it's not listed in the table, but just for reference, yeah.
It did not present in the table.
And FRTA. And then Northfield EMS Oversight Committee, I was serving on that task force. Now it's actually fully established, and the MOU, I believe, is in place. There does need to be an official rep. I was serving through this meeting, so that one, although we put it on here, we have not decided that one, so we should decide that tonight, too, whether either of you want to be the Northfield EMS Oversight Committee rep for the board, or would like me to continue? I'm fine continuing as part of the fire and EMS liaison role. Chief is the other rep for us, obviously, fire chief.
To me, it makes sense where you have all the other first responder capacities, that seems to...
Carry with. Okay. We just want to list it there, we'll just add it in to the fire and EMS, or as another one. For swap for, let's see, senior housing, I guess what I would say, Jim and Bill, is something in the realm of probably border health, CONCOM, school, might be kind of similar. I mean, there's a lot going on with senior housing, and I think those are ones that at times can be busy, and I don't know if there's any preference between those three, but that'd be what I would maybe offer for a recommendation.
Fine to me. No problem.
Anyone you prefer?
Why don't, it is 9:23. Bill, if it's okay with you, I will take the responsibility for the school department and school committee.
Okay.
Swap for senior housing, between the two of you.
Yep.
School to...
Perfect. Sounds great. Works for me, and otherwise, Bill will take on all of Sloughman-Bastarash's assignments.
Yep.
You got it.
Okay. You have no concerns about finance and the family members, since you're okay with trustee at this point, right?
I'm sorry?
You have no concerns with finance committee liaison and family being on it, right, based on your discussion about trustees? You said you're not concerned anymore, because it's not really financial, so you're not...
No, there's no...
Just wanted to confirm that you're fine.
Understanding it better two years into it, I have no substantive gain or any...
Perfect.
So no.
Okay.
And thank you for reminding me. Yes, I have a household member on the finance committee. I forgot about that.
It was a recent change.
It was.
Okay. Anything else on liaisons? Chair's decided. That's that.
That's fine.
I will get this out to all departments, boards, and commissions.
All right. So there's no other business. Next meeting is July 21, 6:30 here. Make a motion to adjourn at 9:24 PM. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.